Well, the hour is upon us, so I will be here.
We're just kidding about it looked like a cam.
Okay.
Oh, so you're on?
Yes.
Okay.
Not with much volume.
So, good evening. As Chair of the Extra Planning Board, I'm declaring that an emergency exists that I'm working, invoking the provisions of RSA 91-a colon two, room number three, parenthesis B, close parenthesis. Federal, state, and local officials have determined that gatherings of ten or more people pose a substantial risk to our community in its continuing efforts to combat the spread of COVID-19. In concurring with their determination, I also find this meeting as imperative to the continued operation of the town government and services which are vital to public safety and confidence during this emergency. As such, this meeting will be conducted without a quorum of this body physically present in the same location. At this time, I'd also like to welcome members of the public assessing this meeting remotely. Even though this meeting is being conducted in a unique manner, under unusual circumstances, the usual rules of conduct and decorum apply. Welcome to the Extra Planning Board meeting of August 20th. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their name, also please state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting. So, I'm Langdon Plummer. I'm Chair of the Board, and no one is with me tonight. Turn your speaker on, please. Or your microphone.
Yeah, the tab's not working again. Nancy Belantara, alternate, and I'm alone in the room.
Okay, Gwen English, regular member.
Gwen English, I am alone in the room.
Aaron Brown, regular member.
Aaron Brown, I'm in my home office alone.
And tonight, we're treated as a guest of the Chair of the Select Board. Nico?
Good evening. I'm Nico Papakostinos, Select Board rep for about an hour until Slick Woman Cowan comes back, and I am alone.
Okay. Peter Steckler?
Hi, Pete Steckler. I'm an alternate, and I'm currently alone.
Pete Cameron?
I'm here, up on the leg, and nobody's with me in this room.
All right. Jen Martell, regular member?
Jen Martell, and I'm in the room alone.
John Gruder, regular member?
John Gruder, and I'm in my office alone.
And Town Planner Dave Sharple's?
Dave Sharple's, Town Planner, in the room by myself.
Okay. When we get to asking questions that, for the public's participation, Dave will keep a track of that as we progress through our meeting. So, the first item on the agenda is approval of minutes of August 13, 2020. I don't seem to find my copy, so I may not sure that I got a copy or not.
No, I couldn't find mine either, so it's maybe not a copy.
I think she got a copy. No, I think she had just put it on there, but it didn't, she said she didn't have the minutes, so we can get right over that.
All right.
Did everyone, did anyone get a copy? Because I thought Barb mentioned that to me last week, that she's like, yeah, you know, the minutes, because we've been having a meeting every week now.
Right.
So, we...
Can't keep up with the Board.
Yeah, well, when they're ready, we'll get them to you.
Okay, fine. Then, we'll go to our regular agenda then. The application of Osram Sylvania for a minor subdivision of 32.21 acre parcel located at 129-131 Portsmouth Avenue and off Holland Way into three lots, and request to affirm that tax map parcel number 57, excuse me, 51-17, located east of Holland Way, Holland Way, is a separate lot that was created when Hampshire dot created the Holland Way right away. The subject properties are located in the C2 Highway Commercial and CT Corporate Technologies zoning districts, tax map parcel number 52-112, and number 51-17. This case number 20 past 20-7. And I would ask Dave to make his comments, if the case is ready to be heard first.
It is complete for review purposes, in my opinion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, then I would like a motion to open this case.
Dave, a motion to open the case.
Thank you, a second?
Done.
Okay. Roll call vote. Gwen, how do you vote? Turn your microphone on, please.
Did you say Gwen? I didn't catch it.
Yes, I did say Gwen.
Okay, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry. It sounded like Gwen. Um, aye. I'm sorry.
Aaron?
Yes.
Nick?
Aye.
Pete Cameron?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
John?
Aye.
Aye, myself, so we are ready to go. So now, Dave, would you like to start the case for us, please, with your overview?
Yeah, thank you. Well, just, okay. The applicant submitted a minor subdivision to create two lots out of a 32.21 acre lot, basically, you know, align, creating two. There is a third lot on the subdivision that's north of Holland, on the north side of Holland Way, but that is, that's already a lot of record. It is not shown on any planning board plan, but it was a lot of record when they accepted Holland Way and basically subdivided off the property. When you accept a public right of way, you basically create a lot on either side. This would, this subdivision would show that and would be, you know, of record now after that. But essentially, essentially, the way I view it, even though it does include that, is creating a, you know, two lots out of the 32.21 acres on Holland Way, and it has frontage on Portsmouth. Meets the, all the code requirements according to our building official, Doug Eastman, who is the Code Compliance Officer, he checks these plans for, for all, you know, meets the dimensional requirements. It also went before the TRC. We didn't have a formal meeting, because this was submitted, I think, I don't, a while ago.
Gordon Winnow.
In the spring, so, yeah. And it went through the TRC process. We individually staff reviewed it. We had several comments, a host of comments, I included in your letter. The plans were revised, a lot was, a lot was dropped. It was a three lot to start. Now it's a two. All staff issues have now been addressed. The one remaining issue that we had was that the plans still show a building, I think it's Building C, within the setbacks. But their attorney sent us a notice of obligation to remove the encroachment, and a condition of approval would be that the notice of obligation to remove the encroachment shall be recorded along with or prior to recording of the final plans. So that will assure that that building is, is going to be removed or relocated to meet the setbacks. So outside of that, it is satisfied, all staff comments.
Okay, thank you. Gordon, thank you for coming to this evening.
Well, thank you very much for having us. I really appreciate it. It's been, it's been quite a while. I don't have a lot to add. I do have a graphic that might, you know, sort of illustrate what it is we're doing. If I can take five minutes and share my screen, I can sort of show you where this is located and what is, all right.
What's happening on Holland Way, huh? Oh, great.
Can you see, you can see that?
Yes. I can.
Okay. Hang on just a second, and let me get my, okay, so, and you can see the laser pointer as well. So, on the wet, north is to the right in this plan, because we did that to get everything on one sheet. Portsmouth Avenue is at the top of this plan, when the existing driveway comes back and accesses this main building, existing building. These buildings are all existing on the site. It is Osram's interest to keep operating out of this existing building and keep accessing it from Portsmouth Avenue for the foreseeable future, and to create a two lot subdivision with one lot being this lot that is on Portsmouth Avenue, and then the remainder would be, would take frontage off of Holland Way, but would maintain their existing access on Portsmouth Avenue. There are a number of wetland areas on the site. Some of them are manmade and part of the drainage system, and some of them are extant natural wetlands. So, the areas in blue and the areas that have setbacks associated with them on the plans are the natural wetlands. And as in, in conformance with your regulations, the other wetlands, while being subject to regulation by the state, are not subject to a town regulation. This is the building that Dave mentioned, Building C. It's a small building that currently is vacant. Osram has committed to removing or relocating as necessary upon, prior to conveyance of that lot, but they'd like to wait until they have a buyer, until they, you know, before they commit the dollars to actually do that work. This is the lot that is the existing lot of record, map 51 lot 17. It's approximately 21 acres. There are prime wetlands on this site, but we did not do, there's no plans for anything that Osram has at this point, so we did not spend the money on a delineation, because that's something that will have to be done, obviously, before, you know, any subsequent owner or before Osram pursues any additional work on that property. And there's a note to that effect on the subdivision plan. So, it's pretty straightforward. The only other thing I would say is that there are cross easements that have been established for utility services and for access. There are, there is the Exeter Shoreland Zone or District that encompasses a portion of the southerly part of the property, which is within 300 feet of the Exeter Reservoir. So that's just a further, a further little wrinkle in this. And at this point, Osram is looking to sell this front piece and keep the back piece in operation, but there are no, there are no current plans for any kind of further development or modification to the site. So with that, I guess I would answer, answer any questions that you might have.
Questions on the part of the Board?
John Gruder has his hand up.
John, turn your mic on, please.
I just did. Just a question. So Building A and B, is Building B still Osram, and is it, there's an empty now or something?
Uh, it is. That's correct. It is still owned by Osram. I'm not quite sure when they stopped using it for, for the uses that they, the manufacturing uses that they had previously used it for, but it is on the market.
All right. I just found it kind of interesting, because we got a letter dated July 22 on another subdivision from the plant manager talking about the need for workforce housing, so, you know, would help with any expansion plans they might have. And I feel surprised that we're talking about, but he mentioned that, and potential to expand in the next few years at our Exeter operations site. And now it looks like we're selling part of it.
Hi, this is Paul Valentine, the plant manager at Osram. Yes, referencing that letter, we do intend to continue operation and expand at the building we intend to keep.
Building A potentially could be enlarged.
That's correct. We're still, we still have vacant space in that building, and we also have additional shifts that we can add to. And so we do intend for this foreseeable future to continue operations at our extra Building A.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I don't, oh, Gwen English.
Gwen? Um, I think you, I think you may have answered this, Dave, but have they addressed all the comments that were made by Public Works and the Natural Resource Planner in the letter that was included in the packet?
Yes, I've circled back with both Kristen and Jen Mates, and yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
The good part about this is it's been sitting around for a few months, so we've had plenty of time to review, re-review, talk to the applicant, and bring it to the Board where staff has been, you know, satisfied.
Yeah, that's good. Is there anybody in the public, Dave, that you see?
There are no, zero attendees from the public.
Okay. Just checking. So, basically, it's a lot line adjustment application?
Yeah, no waivers being requested.
No waivers, okay.
I do have, I do have suggested conditions of approval, so I can, I can offer those.
Okay.
Someone makes a motion. Two are just, you know, you've heard them before, but one, a DWG file of the final plan should be provided to the Town Planner showing all property lines and monumentation prior to signing the final plans. The plan must be in NAD 1983 State Plane, New Hampshire FIPS 2800 feet coordinates. Number two, all monumentations shall be set in accordance with Section 9.25 of the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations prior to the issuance of a Certificate of Occupancy for any building slash unit. And three, the notice of obligation to remove encroachment and attached here too shall be recorded along with or prior to the recording of the final plans. And just so you know, what we're talking about here, I will quickly read it. The notice of obligation to remove encroachment. Osram Sylvania Delaware Corporation with an address of, it'll be filled in, hereby records this notice of obligation to remove encroachment in connection with that certain subdivision approval by the Town of Exeter with respect to Osram's property located on Portsmouth Avenue, that, 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 recorded here. Note 26 on the plan describes a condition of approval of said plan that Building C and its appurtenant equipment will be relocated or removed as necessary to conform with setbacks prior to the conveyance of Lot A or Lot B. I didn't read all the, you know, the legalese parts, but that's the, that's the, you know, and it has all the notary signature and so forth. So basically, it secures that Building C will be in compliance before any lots transfer.
Thank you for sparing us the pain and agony.
I'm insulted.
If there's no discussion, then I would ask for, be willing to hear a motion.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move at the request of Osram Sylvania, Planning Board Case Number 20-7, for a minor subdivision approval be approved with the conditions that were recently laid out by Dave Sharple's.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Jen. Any discussion? Then we'll do a roll call vote. And Gwen, I'm going to start with you.
Aye.
Aaron?
Yes.
Nico?
Aye.
Pete Cameron?
Yes.
Jen Martell?
Aye.
John Gruder?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, so vote is positive and goes. Thank you very much, Gordon, for your patience the other evening.
Thank you very much for hearing us as expeditiously as you could.
Right. Okay.
Appreciate it.
We're all set there. Continued public hearing on the application of Gateway at Exeter LLC for proposed lot line adjustment and subdivision at 170 Epping Road. Lot line adjustment would transfer 2.10 acres of land from tax map parcel 47-7 to tax map parcel 47-6, and subsequently, a proposed subdivision of tax map parcel 47-7 into two lots in conjunction with a mixed-use development being composed for the site. Subject parcels are located in C3 Epping Road Highway Commercial Zoning District, Planning Board Case Number 19-15. Connected with this, of course, is the second part. Let's continue public hearing on the application of Gateway at Exeter LLC for site plan review on a wetlands conditional use permit for the proposed construction of a mixed-use development at 170 Epping Road, parenthesis TM 47-6 and 47-7, close parenthesis. The proposal includes a 224-unit multifamily residential complex and two-story 48,560 square foot mixed-use building that may include 20,040 square feet YMCA daycare facility, office retail space, and possibly a restaurant, along with associated site improvements. Subject of parcels are located in the C3 Epping Road Highway Commercial Zoning District, Planning Board Case Number 19-16. And Dave, would you start us off tonight, please?
All right, thank you, yes. I'll be brief, because we have seen this project on several occasions. They appeared before the Board last on July 23. The application was tabled, and this extra meeting was scheduled to accommodate their return. Issues that were a focus of the last meeting were, the main issues were the wetlands and the traffic and impact and circulation. You did receive and discuss the GZA report at the last meeting. In regards to traffic, an updated analysis was provided. I did provide the study findings and recommendations portion as part of your packet, and we also sent the entire traffic impact analysis via email. With that, we have been, I've been trying to work together with the applicant, and as you know, Jason Ploard from VHB was hired on behalf of the city as a, I mean, city, behalf of the town, as their, our third-party review consultant to review their traffic engineer's report and proposed mitigation. We've had a couple of meetings today. We met at 1 o'clock collectively with myself, their traffic engineer, and ours. We met again just shortly before this meeting. I think we got to a resolution, because my goal was to try to make sure that, you know, our third-party reviews are, you know, in agreement of what the applicant's proposing. That's what, how we usually work it. We, we like to see that. So I have Jason Ploard here. He is here available to answer any questions. So I think we've gotten to a point, via conditions of approval, that I'll align later, if we get that far, or, you know, for your consideration. Also, there is, the applicant submitted a revised waiver request letter dated August 11, and you'll note in my memo, there are one, two, three, four, six waivers, and then there's actually a lot line adjustment, a conditional use permit, and a site plan motion, and they're all included in my memorandum for your convenience. That's all I have now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Jim, are you ready to go? Or who's leading, who's leading the charge tonight? Tom?
I can do that, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jay Leonard. I'm the lawyer for the project. I'm a lawyer in Nashua at Wiltz White &amp; Fontaine. We do have present with us today Jim Petropolis, as you saw, also Tom Monahan and Jeff Monahan are here, and then we have Steve Pernah and Brendan Quigley. At the last meeting, Mr. Chairman, we went through the minutes, took notes, and I think we have submitted, we've tried, and I believe Mr. Sharple's confirms, that we have submitted a set of plans that incorporates the requested additional information and the two or three changes that the, that the Board had suggested. Just to list those, we did increase the size of the commercial building to the 48,500-some-odd feet, as suggested. We've also taken off the drop-off area for the parking, and we have also removed the six parking spaces that were at the end of the, at the trailhead, as requested. We have provided the additional information about the three minor wetland areas that were flagged and identified by GZA. We, the plans now show those three areas. We have also modified the southerly exit drive, so that it's now a right-only exit. And we have added a sheet that we can talk about a little bit more later, but added a sheet of proposed interim improvements, which are proposed in the event that the TIF improvements are not accomplished when this, when this site goes online. The other thing that was included in Mr. Petropolis's submission was a summary of the waivers, and there are actually nine waivers. There are six under a letter from Jim Petropolis, and then there are three under a letter from me. The six that Jim Petropolis has requested all relate to subdivision and site plan issues, and we talked about those in, at some length. The three that I have requested, we've talked about also, but those, just to give the Board a reminder, there is a request for a waiver of the 400 square feet recreation area, usually, or it's actually a guideline, it's not a requirement, but it's a guideline for residential apartments. And then there is a request for a waiver of the recreation impact fee, and there's a request for a waiver of 25% of the school impact fee. And those are all in the submission or in the letters with the most recent plans. With regard to the traffic, we're happy to report, and my thanks to Mr. Sharple's and Jason Ploard, and Steve Pernah, who is with our group. Everybody worked very hard recently until about 6:30 tonight, and I believe we have come up with an agreement, if you will, of course, subject to the Board's approval, but the concept being that the interim improvements, as shown on the plans submitted, will include a right turn in, a southbound right turn in, and a northbound center lane left turn. And those two improvements will be necessary after the first 149 residential units are constructed and occupied. So in other words, they become a requirement if the TIF improvements do not occur by the time the second half of this project comes online, that the second half being the third building of residential units and the commercial building. So that was kind of where we were on the traffic. I hope I have summarized the traffic side of things, because we I hope I have summarized the traffic side of things because we did work hard and the details matter. And we certainly appreciate all of the efforts of all people working on it. So that's kind of where we are. We think we have addressed and answered all the questions. We can certainly talk in more detail if this board thinks it's necessary. It's our view that we've kind of, we have run through all of the conditional use criteria. You see in your, in your, in the original submission, there was a full narrative and detailed factual support for the criteria. I think the essential point of our request here is that we, and later it was confirmed or at least agreed to some extent by the zoning board, we, it is our view that this site is best developed concentrating development in the front in order to protect the rear. And that's, that's the reason for the conditional use permit. We are proposing, as you know, work in the front, the donation of the land to the rear. And that is an effort, an overall effort to meet the needs of the town in many different regards. Not the least of which is the workforce housing and affordable housing. I don't know if you want any more information right now. I think you pretty much have as much information as you need. But we certainly can answer whatever questions you might have. There may be questions. I'm not sure how much we've talked about the waivers and in particular, the impact fee waivers. We're certainly prepared to talk about that as well.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions the board might have? General questions and specific questions? Pete Cameron?
Well, let me go back to my favorite subject and that's traffic. What of the materials? Well, you just indicated, I think, Thomas, that you and Steve and Dave had come up with a, with a, an agreement regarding the traffic exit and entrance to the project. Am I correct in that?
Yes, Member Cameron.
My name is Pete. My name is Pete, by the way.
Sure does make it a lot easier. My name's Jay too. We'll make this, we'll get this done. Yeah, so, so we've been working. Dave Sharples suggested that we all try to figure out what's workable under the circumstances. Because we have an unusual circumstance here. We know we have some improvements coming. We're not sure when they're going to come. But we're, we've got some funds for it. We're in the middle of some study. So it made sense to see if we could come up with a solution that really just has to address the interim. So Steve Pernah and Jason Plord worked hard today, actually, and went through the numbers. Jason was concerned about some left turns. We went through some numbers. Steve proposed some, some solutions. And what we, and I say we really, I listened more than anything, but what we decided was that the interim improvements that are shown on the plans are satisfactory for the first 149 units. And that after that, we need to start constructing the interim improvements as shown on the plans. So, and that's what I mean by the agreement and it will be a condition of approval. So at about 10 of seven, I sent off a proposed condition of approval to Dave Sharples. And he was going to take a look at that and make sure it met his concerns, Dave and Jason Plord as well. So that's what I meant by the agreement. I think we have addressed both the traffic concerns and the timing of improvements in the event that the TIF improvements are not accomplished as we might expect.
Okay, so that we don't have, or do we have a sheet which reflects that?
Yes, you do.
Okay, and basically then is that sheet number one here?
I think Jim Petropolis can probably put that right up on the screen if you would like.
Yeah, that would, that would be helpful. I think I understand what you all have done, but I'd kind of like to.
Okay, so this is Jim Petropolis, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Let me just scroll through the quick plans here, the aerial. This is the revised master plan showing the 48,500 square foot building. I call your attention to the right turnout only. And then here's our main entrance here. We eliminated those six spaces, as Jay said, in the back. I will scroll down to Mr. Pernah's sketch and I will let Mr. Pernah describe to Mr. Cameron the thinking here at our front door. Steve?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Stephen Pernah with Pernah and Company. Our office prepared the original traffic impact assessment, the follow-up, updated traffic assessment and the shared parking analyses. So what you're looking at here is essentially page 29 out of our traffic study. And this is a summary of what we had come up with for an interim traffic mitigation plan. And based on some input today and discussions with Jason and David, we've modified it slightly. So on this diagram, you can clearly see the right place to put the driveway is directly across from the mobile driveway. And what we're recommending is to have two exit lanes because we know that left turn departures from any driveway on this corridor involve a lot of delay during the peak hour periods. So it made sense to have that separate lane for people turning right when they leave because they don't have to wait as long. And it also shows the south side driveway, as Jim just explained, being limited to a right turn exit only situation. What, what changes occurred today? What we're calling phase one, and that would be up to 149 apartments. For that particular condition, the applicant is proposing to put in a left turn pocket in the northbound direction for left turns into the site. And again, this is in the event that the TIF improvement project hasn't come to fruition at that point. And then the second phase would be the remainder of the residential and the commercial building. And at that point, an additional southbound right turn lane would be added, which you do see on this diagram. I'll tell you that as part of the updated traffic study, we did look at the need for traffic signals. Not only here at the site driveway, but also up at the interchange. And what we found is that this north side driveway does not have enough traffic exiting from it to meet any of the traffic signal warrants. So the, the appropriate form of traffic control is the two exit lanes and stop sign control. Now that's all, you know, subject to change as the corridor study gets completed by VHB. But this is what we've come up with for the interim.
Okay, thank you. If, now, Dave, you sent on, or at least I got today, some notes regarding the scoping meeting, which was held, well, almost a month ago. And I'm, in reading it over, I came across a sentence in the, basically the third paragraph in the second line, which said, "A previous controlled access agreement granted two driveways for the proposed development's location." Now, what was that, David?
Yeah, what that means is the state used to own the highway, the whole way. Then the town, I don't know when, but they, they took it over and it's called Urban Compact. It's giving it to the town. So now we maintain Route 27 at least until Cronin Road. So it's in our jurisdiction. And then the state owns Cronin Road to the north, you know, over the highway 101 and off toward the high school. But the DOT retained a controlled access right-of-way agreement. They said, okay, no matter what happens in the future, this area will have controlled access. They have it on Holland Way as an example and they have it here. And what they do is they designate, you know, certain amount of accesses. So you can exceed those even if it's 40 years later and it's in our jurisdiction. So they noted it on the plans. They went to DOT. DOT researched this section of the controlled access right-of-way and determined that back when the agreement was made, there were two accesses allowed, one for each of these lots. And that is what is consistent with what is being proposed.
Okay, that's what I wanted, that's what I was curious as to whether in essence that, well, it's now consistent with what is apparently going to be.
Yeah, they could have up to two with the DOT. At first, we only preferred one, particularly because, mostly because they kept offering two access points with both allowing left turns out and into the site. But now with that southern entrance being right turn only, we no longer have an issue with two accesses, which the maximum we're allowed was two by the DOT.
Okay. That's all right now on this subject. Okay, thank you.
Gwen English has her hand up.
Okay. Gwen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. In the same letter that Pete Cameron was just referring to, on the very, on the second page at the bottom, it talks about other issues, in particular, traffic that is involved with the people going to and from the high school. And I'm just curious as to how and when, how that will tie into this project as it goes forward and when, kind of an updated study. And I know that we're in kind of an impossible situation right now because the school will not be inviting kids back. That, at this point, is, is up in the air. The timing of that is up in the air. So there won't be high school traffic for, well, we don't know how long. But how, how will that play into this as this project advances? If that makes sense?
I can try to answer that.
Thank you, Steve.
At the, at the scope meeting, the department did have a copy of our original traffic impact assessment. It was limited just to the front door of the site driveways. And as a result of that meeting, they asked for the study area to be expanded to include the two ramps and Continental Drive. Your consultant, VHB, had data from October of last year for Continental Drive, which was very helpful and correlated with our October 2019 data for the, for the front door. Back in October 2019, we counted both ramps. Kind of like a crystal ball in anticipation that this may come up in the future. And, you know, the DOT asked again about the influence of the high school. So what we did was a 12-hour, or actually an 11-hour count, an all-day count up at the westbound off-ramp. So that data is of interest to them in terms of what impacts are. I can tell you, you know, looking at that data, that the, the street peak hour, the commuter peak hour in the late afternoon was actually higher than what happens at, say, 2 o'clock when the school lets go. So the good thing about the data that's in our report is it's pre-COVID-19. So the kids are in school. And that's why I think that data will be very valuable to the DOT. Just to take it a step further, we, at their request, we looked at the need for traffic signals at the ramps. And we determined that the westbound off-ramp has enough traffic today to justify signalization. And that was a big question. They did not know that at the scope meeting. So now that they've got the report and the data, they're going to see that. The eastbound ramp junction did not meet warrants for, for signalization. The westbound did. So I think we've got that subject covered for the DOT. They've got good information and they'll use it as they best see fit.
Thank you. Thanks for the good work too. Anyone else, Dave?
Uh, Jay Leonard, but I think he's had continuously his hand up. Do you want to speak again or? Oh, Pete Steckler has his hand up.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. So I don't want to, I guess, if and when we're ready to talk about wetlands, I'd like to make comments, but I don't want to move us off of the traffic. If others want to keep the traffic conversation going.
Well, why don't we go ahead? I think we probably have talked on traffic, so.
Sorry, sorry, just before we go there. I mean, we have Jason Plord here available to ask any questions. I mean, does anyone need to hear from our third-party consultant, traffic review?
I'd like it. May we hear, may I hear that at least if no one else wants to?
Aaron would, yes, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I think that would be important so we can just, you know, kind of just try to exhaust all traffic and then, and then moving on. Sorry, Pete.
No, no problem.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Jason Plord with VHB. Everything that you've heard this evening is accurate from Mr. Sharples, Mr. Pernah. I know in the beginning that you heard from Attorney Leonard, but Steve Pernah was able to kind of change around and correct some of the statements as far as the improvements in the phasing and things like that. It's been a, a lot of work that's been going on from all behind the scenes, you know, from the development team, from the town and from us as well. We wanted to make sure that everything was going to fit in as this development, as far as traffic operations and safety. And then also to make sure that it was going to coincide with the future plans for, along Epping Road as far as the corridor is concerned for the improvements. I think that, you know, what you've heard tonight and I am in agreement with, which is that the impacts of the development would be mitigated with the phase one, with a northbound left turn lane to go into the site. And then for phase two would be the southbound right turn lane. We held a lot of different discussions to try to make sure that the traffic volumes and the analyses were all going to coincide with what's being observed out there today. So one of the biggest things that we, we struggle with as traffic engineers is replicating existing conditions within a computer model. And that was what our biggest discussions were about, was trying to find a way to model existing conditions accurately. And I think that we reached a consensus on that and that's how this development program really came to light. You know, I think that the next step, you know, after approvals would be obviously the development team putting together some construction documents for the town to review, to make sure that that's all on record. So that, you know, everybody has that, those documents in hand to make sure that where the right of way is, any utilities, things like that, any impacts. But yeah, we, we are in agreement with, with what you have been presented with this evening.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you for that, Dave.
And I see, I don't know who traffic, but I see Aaron Brown and Gwen English's hand up.
Okay, Aaron. Please.
Hi, I had a question about the phasing. We had discussed possibly figuring out how to make sure this commercial building gets constructed. And we had discussed that tying into occupancy of the residential units. And I was curious to see how that conversation went further. I guess maybe it's a question directed at the applicant, but also Dave Sharples, if he can update us.
Yeah, I can, I can take it because this is, I, I'm suggesting this condition of approval. I'll read it to you. As presented at the Exeter Zoning Board of Adjustment, approximately 48,000 plus or minus 500 square feet of commercial space shall be constructed. Commercial building and all associated site improvements, parking, access aisle, sidewalks, entranceways, et cetera, shall be constructed to the weather, i.e. all exterior finishes, including but not limited to siding, roofing, doors, windows, et cetera, prior to the issuance of a building permit for Building C. prior to the issuance of a building permit for Building C, four-story, 75-unit residential structure. Basically, what that condition does is it allows building permits and site work to to commence on Buildings A and B, which would be a 75 and a 74 unit building. It's kind of one building, but it's attached, so allowing 149 apartments to get built and occupied. But then prior to, uh, a a building permit for Building C, uh, it would have to be to the weather. You could move that up to CO, you know, but that would assure that Building C and the commercial, the Building C doesn't get occupied or a permit issued until the commercial is to the weather.
Okay, so I, um, see that the applicant has their attorney here. Does that handle the financial limitations that you were facing?
So, um, if I may, Mr. Chairman, first off, let me apologize to Jason. I I, um, I I did misstate the, uh, the the agreement because we had so many different ones, so I I truly apologize. I did not, that was unintentional, and and we certainly agree with what Jason has said. Uh, so my apologies there. Uh, with directly to the question, we are aware that, uh, Dave was going to request this conditional or this condition of approval. And we're going to do the best we can with it. I I can't tell you that it that is going to be acceptable to the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority. We're going to try to work with it, um, and we were going to just do our best at this point in time. Um, I, but I can't, I can't say that we agree with it. I can simply say that we're aware and we understand where he's coming from. And and we appreciate that the board wants this, uh, commercial building. So we're gonna, we're gonna do our best with it and see where it takes us.
So are they part of the financing on the commercial building, or is there another vehicle intended for that?
No, no, the, um, the hitch is that, um, NIFA financing is associated with bonds, which get very technical and, um, very specific in their requirements, and there can't be any conditions at all. Uh, because we can't, they don't want to advance funds uh, not knowing for certain that they can occupy the building. So so that's that's the issue. Uh, if if we were to make it a condition of occupancy, then it presents a problem. So I think that's, it's as simple as that, to be honest with you.
So my concern, um, with what I've heard so far with Dave's condition and Dave, I haven't looked at it, I just heard you. So it's the first time I've heard what you're proposing as a condition? Would be if 149 units are built, occupied, phase one happens, and phase two potentially falls apart. I don't think that's likely, but it could happen. Um, and we were trying to get the commercial structure going because, uh, we've had trouble with that on this corridor with other approvals. Um, and literally years going by. And I think that the, in my experience, the desire of what's happened on that road with town improvements and the TIF was really to expand the commercial district, not directly to expand a large number of additional rental units, which is what we're getting. Um, and those seem to be built quite quickly. I I certainly understand the marketplace. Uh, I understand that there's a huge market for residential units, um, that aren't massive homes for 750 or 800,000 dollars. I I understand that need, and that it's easily filled. The commercial side, I'm hoping that we could get more creative and create a more vibrant commercial district along 27. And I don't think this project contributes to a vibrant commercial district. A 48,000 square foot building would be a step in the right direction, only if it's built and it's still not really part of a vibrant district. I think there were some pretty significant commercial propositions for this parcel, and I'm sure that, uh, those were well considered and unfortunately didn't come forward. But, um, not having this part at least built would be uh, tough, a tough thing to have happen to the town.
So I can respond a little bit if if the chair would like.
Sure, yes, please do.
So I I we we appreciate your point, um, and that's why uh, there remains a commercial building as part of the plan. Um, I can tell you that Mr. Monahan has had some further discussions with the why there's still hope in that regard. But right now, we can't really market the building because we don't know for sure that it's approved and and gonna gonna be a possibility. The other thing, and and I don't know that we mentioned this the last time, but the reason that the zoning board thought this was an appropriate site for residential as opposed to the commercial is because primarily the residential has a much smaller footprint. And the impact for a res- for a large commercial or a large industrial project, um, might be too great, the impact on wetlands, et cetera. So there were some very specific reasons why this, um, went to a residential use. It also supports the, uh, the industry immediately around it, whether it be over in the, um, Unitil area or, you know, just generally on the on the road. And you've seen, you've seen some, uh, supporting letters from employers. So, uh, because it's close to employers, because it's close to the highway, and because the wetland impacts were, uh, different, uh, I think that's the the reason that it ends up being a very good place for this kind of housing. Um, I appreciate your comments on the commercial, and we would love to work with you on that. I know Mr. Monahan is committed to that goal, but but it is, it is part of the market question, you know, just where's the demand for offices right now? I think the pandemic probably makes it even, uh, more of a question on the office side of things. Uh, but but the, uh, you know, the childcare and the, um, uh, daycare use seems to be one that is getting some, uh, some, uh, interest. Um, I don't know if Tom, I see Tom Monahan is here. He can probably comment more if if he if he wants, yeah.
If I am able to, I would love to.
Go ahead, Tom.
Hi, uh, first of all, thanks for letting me speak. You know, this is, this is sort of a conundrum. And, um, uh, the last thing anyone, any one of us wants to see is a see-through commercial building. Um, uh, you know, you've down 128, uh, there were commercial buildings for years that you could see right through and 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 certainly I don't want it, and I don't think that the town of Exeter wants it. You know, for instance, uh, uh, at the Merrimack Premium Outlets, uh, which I was involved in the development and still own a bunch of the land there. We had approved, um, uh, my last phase, which is ongoing right now of some 400 apartments, a couple hundred thousand square feet of office and retail, actually 200 apartments and a couple hundred thousand square feet of office and retail. And, uh, it had been approved for a while, and and we had zero, um, interest, although we had interest, but, uh, but zero, uh, people signing on a dotted line for the commercial, uh, real estate, uh, for the real, the, uh, res- uh, industrial, excuse me, uh, retail. Uh, so we went back to the town and changed the plan because, uh, you know, I I I frankly am trying to make some good business decisions here. And, uh, yeah, the town's letting us build, uh, the first phase of the apartments and then I'll let, you know, we're not going to build them until the, till we we, uh, know what we're gonna do, uh, I'm gonna build a hotel and a and a, uh, and a and a restaurant. But we took out all the other retail, and that's just how the market is in today's world. I'm gonna have to build a building that I'm gonna try to try to rent for some, you know, whether it's 25 or 30 dollars a foot, and you can go right next door and get something for 16 dollars a foot, um, right on, uh, 27. So it it is a conundrum, um, you know, um, yeah, you know, I know that you you folks have to look at this as if it's, uh, faceless. But, um, you know, I have been around for a while. My goal is to build and lease out this building. But I I I, it's just so difficult to to, um, be able to commit without having the tenants. And frankly, uh, we did, we did this out of, uh, total respect to the planning board in the town of Exeter. I I I can't put up a sign saying for rent 48,000 square feet before I have something approved. Um, you know, that wouldn't be right, and, uh, it would probably send me down the road for denial because of arrogance. So, um, you know, I I had to, I had to consider that as well. So it is a conundrum, you know, again, it's faceless. I I would, hopefully, uh, God willing, if things happen positively uh, tonight, uh, there'll be signs up there Monday for lease. But I can't, I I I I can't, I I, you know, other than the Y who has signed an LOI, who have, uh, reinstituted conversations with us just the past couple of weeks, uh, with the new CEO at the Y. And and we're we're moving along nicely. But it's not a guarantee, and and that's for 17,000 or 18,000 square feet. Um, frankly, if I, if we could get the Y, I would risk the balance of the building because it is exit, uh, nine, uh, on Route 27, and that's the first, uh, it is the gateway. So I, it's, it is, it's it's faceless, but, um, you know, I, I'm a developer who really I don't want to own a lot of see-through buildings, so I hope you understand my plight as well.
Thank you, appreciate that.
And just, Aaron, just to chime in, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, certainly.
On where I came up with that, um, you know, how I put that condition together, I I had it tied to Buildings A and B, um, to assure it got built. Uh, I talked to the applicant. Uh, they informed me that the financing, their finances was going to be tied to 224 units, not piecemeal. So the way they presented it was that if you put it on just Building C, it will allow the first two buildings to get built and occupied and get some income flowing to the, you know, for the development to get the commercial built. So basically, but the financing will be tied to all 224 units, so it's basically the same. That's what my God, and I thought it was a, you know, a middle ground, if you will, uh, to put to put the condition based on Building C. Uh, because it seemed like from what the applicant, maybe they can detail it more. It seemed like it's very unlikely that 149 units would get built, uh, and then that would be it. But it's a great question for them, but that's not what the, you know, our conversations implied.
Thank you. Let me just point out, Molly Cowan has joined us, I think. There you are, Molly. Uh, could you just introduce yourself as, uh, so everybody will know who you are and if you're by yourself or what's going on, please?
Yes, um, I am here. Thank you for your patience. I just sent my youngest son up to bed. Um, you might have seen him, but he, now I am in the room by myself.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, are you, is is Molly taking over for Nico? So Nico, because
Yes.
She's now the planning board rep, so Nico is no longer.
No, Nico may step down, but he can certainly stay around and watch it live. Oops. Come on.
No, he's still there. He just, he just turned off his video, but I just wanted to make that clear, that Molly Cowan is acting as one of the seven members. Okay, and then, uh, um, if we're moving on, I saw a couple of while they went up and down.
You see, I have your hand up.
Gwen, Nancy, and then we'll get back to Pete once, you know, if you get, when, when, if you get to the conditional use permit, the wetlands.
Gwen? I just want to make sure, Aaron, were you? I don't want to jump to a different topic if that is something you still want to pursue. Are you?
It's nice. Thanks, Gwen.
Before we change subjects.
No, I I think I understand the rationale for uh, the compromise with the condition Dave has proposed that he read to us. I'm still digesting that. I guess I heard the applicant and his concern. I'm empathetic to that, certainly. Uh, nothing gets done without someone coming forward with a project. And I know, uh, you're trying to have a successful project. I certainly understand that. It's a balance of, um, it's a balance of different poles, basically, that we have to walk through as a board. We're weighing out town interests, citizen interest, property owner interest, legalities, et cetera. But I think Dave's proposals seems to be pretty reasonable. Thanks, Gwen.
Thank you, Gwen. Thank you, Pete. Uh, Aaron?
Well, Aaron, I I am troubled as you are, and I know we've talked a bit about this at previous meetings, just our concern about other properties that are um, looking at vacant lots that were, um, being proposed for commercial use. And, um, I I, Mr. Monahan, I I am sympathetic to what you're going through. And and the pandemic certainly hasn't helped anyone. Um, and certainly it makes it challenging because we don't know what the economy is going to do, what, how businesses are going to operate, whether people are going to be working from home. And, um, there's so many factors that are very challenging. So, um, I do understand. And I know you understand where we're, we're grappling, why we're grappling with this too. So this is not easy. Um, so that said, I just wanted to go to an internal traffic issue. And I know at a previous meeting, we were talking about the Y and just our concerns we had about, um, kids getting dropped off. And now that that upper, upper area has been taken off the plan, I'm just wondering how, I mean, assuming that the Y goes forward with this, um, and does become become part of this project eventually, um, how how do you see, um, buses coming in, however, I don't know exactly how kids will get dropped off. But what is the safest way now for that to be treated?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, this is Jim Petropolis. Um, you know, Gwen, we we heard testimony throughout, uh, the presentations about the concern uh, of drop off. We proposed, uh, a little slip lane, but that was not perfect, quite frankly. Um, the children were coming in off other vehicles on the wrong side, and and we we felt we were creating some conflicting vehicle moves in that parking area. Where we ended up here this evening was going back to the original layout, is back where we started from, which is likely a parent parking a vehicle, walking their child into the facility, and then on the pickup, parking the vehicle and going in and picking up their child. Now, our previous testimony was there, based on a previous discussion with the YMCA. There was one, uh, bus vehicle, I don't know when, if it's a school bus, or it could be an extended van that brought children after school to the facility. Uh, but we have proper turning movements to get into the main entrance through the parking lot. They would take but a minute to drop off the students. Somebody from staff would be out there to receive the students at that time. And then that bus could now exit only to the right. Um, so, um, it it's not perfect. We see a lot of daycares with these wonderful portico chairs and drop offs. Um, we don't have that. Uh, but I think we have a simplified plan, a lot cleaner, and I think we've reduced some conflicting vehicle moves. And so that's where we ended up here this evening.
So, so I think I lost you at one point, right? I was confused for a second. So you're not having them come into the, um, let's see, the northern end of the building, they'd be going, oh, maybe you can show me, that would be better.
Can you see the screen?
Yeah, I can. Thank you.
The entrance, the entrance to the daycare facility is right where my my hand is on this back corner.
Okay.
Okay, it is not in the front, it is not at the front door.
Oh, all right.
Okay, so a vehicle would come in or parents would come in, and they would use these parking spaces for these parking spaces to park their vehicle, bring their child in or pick up, bring them out of this door. And then they could be able to exit back if they were heading north, or they could exit south with the slip right if they were heading out.
So, so if they are, uh, can you follow the, follow the path up a bit? So if they are parking there, kids are going to be crossing the street. Is that right to get into the building?
Under parent supervision, right.
Okay.
Parent brings the child in and picks up the child.
All right. It's a little scary, but. It's a little scary, but okay. Is there a crosswalk anywhere?
Is there one there?
I didn't see one. I know there's one down, that looks like one right there, but is there one?
Crosswalks here, correct.
And is there one further up?
There's no crosswalk in.
That's what I wanted. I had that on my list as well. Would that not be a good, is that, I'm not the traffic expert, but is that not a, would that not be a good place to potentially have a crosswalk? Maybe, maybe one of your traffic people could answer that. Just to.
Are you suggesting something painted across this aisle here at the end?
Somewhere up there, yeah. And again, I would defer to a traffic person.
But if a person parks, you know, here, that, this crosswalk doesn't function well for them, they would still cross the aisle, get onto the sidewalk and enter into the door. So.
Okay.
I mean, we could, we could paint across there. That's probably not a bad idea, you know, to paint across the aisle. We'd be happy to do that. But I'm not sure if somebody parks over here that they're going to, you know, come up.
Oh, no, I don't think they would either. I'm more worried about people on where your hand is.
Okay, right in through here.
Yeah.
Okay. You know, they parked here, they could get across and we could connect this sidewalk in as well, here as well. That would be fine.
I, I, you know, I don't, it's hard to know what kind of activities the people at the Y will be involved with, but I think it's nice to have it as walkable as possible on site. So if there's a safe way for people to get out of the building safely and maybe they want to walk around building C and building B and back, I, it would, I just like to see some safety features such as crosswalks or some sort of a safe way for people to cross from the commercial building over to building C in that upper area.
That would be fine. We could do that.
That would help. All right. Thank you, Jim.
Yeah, thank you.
Jim, could you, while you're there, could you?
Oh.
Yeah, could you point out the sidewalks? They almost look like foundation to me, but.
Yeah, so we have concrete sidewalks. There's different pattern here.
So all around the building is a sidewalk, pretty much?
Yes, sir. Yep, all around the building here. There's no connection across here, but certainly all around the access doors in the parking and then we have sidewalks throughout the residential development. Sure.
Yep.
So a connection there is fine. It's a good idea.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, I'm sorry, can I ask another question?
Of course.
I don't, I don't look forward to asking this one, but it seems like with, with projects that we have along Epping Road, we always end up in a discussion about sidewalks so that people have a way to get into town. How, how are we, I mean, I know we, we dealt with that with eighty Epping Road. I know the meeting house had issues about that. How are we addressing sidewalks for new, new buildings on Epping Road, particularly ones like this?
No, I, I wasn't. I was looking at it, wasn't, that was a TRC comment. I thought there was a sidewalk in front of the two accesses at one point. Now it's not shown. Tell me.
I don't see one on my plan, but.
No, I don't either.
I don't think there was ever a proposal for any sidewalk.
Oh, well, TRC kept recommending it, Gwen.
Okay, well, I didn't see it in those notes, but I was concerned about it and I think that's, I'm afraid that if we don't pursue that now, that we can't really backtrack and try to have it done after the fact. I mean, we pride ourselves in being a walkable community and I think if anything, we want to make it more walkable as we go forward. There are a lot of people here who might like to, I mean, it's certainly, it's a long walk into town, but they can do it and I think it would be nice to have some provisions for that. That would be a discussion I would love the board to have. Any thoughts from other board members?
Is the Epping Road study including sidewalks, Dave?
We're, we're looking at it, but, but the TRC has always consistently, I have asked, I, I was surprised. Thank you, Gwen, for bringing that up because I, I thought it got on the plans at one point. Because we had been consistently asking for it.
I didn't look back at original plans, but it doesn't, I, I don't know if they were on an original plan set or not.
I, I don't recall it. I typically try not to bury issues if there's still issues. I try to address any and all issues as best we can. So I'd have to go back and look, look at my notes. You know, currently there's no curbing or, you know, protection for pedestrians along Epping Road. Good question about the corridor study. Is, is, is and will that address sidewalks? I, I really can't speak to that. This particular area is, you know, is a fairly, fairly flattish area here where we're taking the runoff from actually Epping Road that she drains onto our property and we're actually, you know, very in a swell, we're running that swell over and picking that up and bringing that into our drainage system. So I guess we could take a look at it with Mr. Sharples.
I would, I would like that to be pursued and it, it would probably, it's about three hundred feet, did you say, from this main entrance to the southbound entrance?
That's a good, good guess, Gwen, yeah.
Okay. And Dave, I'm assuming that would be where the sidewalk would be. It would be in between the.
In between the two access.
Two access points, yeah.
There's no reason to go further north.
Mm-hmm.
Because he, you know, across Cronin Road, there's actually a sidewalk right before the mobile on the other side that continues all the way up to the, the dog place there. Goes over one-on-one and, and heads for quite a while.
Okay.
But there's not any opportunity on this side of the road to go north because the interchange and the bridge is right there.
Okay. All right. Well, if you, if that's a discussion that you can have with the applicant, I would, I would encourage a sidewalk being built. It's just one, one member of the board.
All right, I didn't keep track of who had, who went first, but Jen Martel, John Gruder and Aaron Brown all have their hands up. Ladies first, I guess.
Thanks, John. My comment actually is sort of piggybacking on what Gwen was saying with the internal circulation. So I definitely want to echo her wishes for a sidewalk along Epping Road and more walkable internal circulation. I mean, I think one thing that we haven't really talked about is, is some of the families living in these residential buildings might be dropping their kids off at the YMCA too. So the ability to walk from buildings A, B, and C over to the commercial building would be important. And then that just made me think about, you know, we were talking about buses and I was just wondering if the applicant has thought about school buses coming to pick up kids who might live in these buildings and where the school bus stop would be.
We have not designated a bus area. We have routed a fire apparatus vehicle through the site, so we know it has proper turning radiuses to work, but we have not contacted any of the school departments about a designated bus pickup area for the site.
Do you have any other questions?
No, I didn't have any other questions. I was just wondering how that would work. I mean, I think it's something that, you know, obviously is going to have to be accommodated somehow because the kids can't be picked up on Epping Road. And it's going to be, I would think, a very busy parking lot that time of day. So no one's going to want to be blocked in by the bus. So I don't know, just something to think about. I don't know if it needs to be resolved, obviously, for this, but.
Generally, first student will dictate that and they very well could stop on Epping Road because nowadays it's stop, the stop signs come out, everyone has to stop in both directions, they pick up the kids and move on. So I, I wouldn't rule them out stopping on Epping Road, but I think it's up to the, the bus company to determine whether, you know, where, where they, where they determine the bus stops.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then, yeah, I think I just want to reiterate, definitely, I think the need for a sidewalk out there so kids don't have to wait in traffic for the bus or stand in the, stand in the drainage ditch. Thank you.
Okay, now who's next? Aaron again, or?
Age before beauty now, Aaron.
Oh.
This, I will, just quick.
Sorry, Aaron.
Both Jen's comments and Gwen's. I, I think, I think the bus stop, I think David just said the first student, but also the, you know, if there's ten students in one building and twenty-five in the other, they're probably going to stop where the most kids are. And that subject, that'll get changed from year to year. I don't think there'll ever be a permanent stop. Hopefully, there's a stop inside the community, not on Epping Road. Question on the sidewalk? Where we, if there's a sidewalk out in front, where does it next continue going into town? I mean, there's no sidewalk beyond that, right, for a while?
Well, we're.
Walking through parking lots or?
We're, we're working on that.
Right. This is, this part of it, but immediately there's no connection to downtown.
No, we're, we're, we're moving. We, we have a grant, I have a grant that is, I think, going to be approved to go out to bid this week, I hope. So that will connect Route one eleven to Route one eleven A, Brentwood Road, to the Roma Joe's sidewalk. I did have a tap grant in for the connection up and to Continental Drive, but that didn't go through the, the last time I submitted, but we had two, you know, T tap grants already in Exeter, so I wasn't too optimistic, but I will keep pursuing that. So right now it only goes up to just past Roma Joe.
All right. Thank you.
Aaron, now you're on.
Hey, John, I think you just called me a beauty, so I want to thank you for that compliment. You know, whether it's deserved or not is debatable, but.
Sure you don't get that too often.
So I want to thank Gwen for discussing sidewalks. That was on my agenda for later and I did an excellent job with that. And I think it is an important element to this project. We've been pretty consistent over the last couple of years trying to have sidewalks as part of these, as part of a condition of approval. So it shouldn't be a surprise to anybody. And it doesn't connect now, but it is definitely part of our master plan, John, as we've discussed a few times, trying to improve the walkability. Even though this is getting further out there, it's not that far. I see people walking on that road nowadays and, and it's, making it less dangerous is probably good. If there's more residential units coming into that area too, probably people are going to walk or bike one way or the other. So we might as well try to make it as safe as possible.
Well, let's, let's hear what, are we finished with sidewalks and traffic and buses? Then let's go to Peter Steckler. He had some comments he wanted to make.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so, you know, probably nothing new from me here. Well, there's something a little bit new, but, you know, I just want to reiterate that generally the scope and scale of this project, in my opinion, isn't appropriate for the wetland characteristics of this site. You know, there's, there's two point nine one acres wetland impact and nearly eight acres of combined wetland and wetland buffer impact. You know, it appears to me that over half of the development footprint is impacting wetlands or their buffers and that, you know, relating to the conditional use permit, that conditions two and four aren't met because the proposal is overall unsuitable for the site. That's my opinion. And then more specifically with regard to condition number three, that in, that wildlife habitat is a primary or principal function, that was part of GVA's third-party review. You can see that on page six of their memo dated July twenty-three, even though the applicant is not, is not stating that wildlife habitat is a primary or principal function of the wetland on site. But, you know, taking the GVA's opinion, you know, that these, that wildlife habitat is a principal function, and that because it's a principal function for wetland, for wildlife, they move wildlife in an east-west or west-east direction and that the proposed impacts will be detrimental to the wildlife habitat value and functions of the wetlands on this site and that CUP condition number three is, is just, just cannot be met. You look at the configuration of the development, that it completely cuts off east-west connectivity, that this wetland system has a principal function of wildlife habitat, which moves wildlife. You know, that's part of the value of, of wetlands for wildlife is that it facilitates their movement and this development just completely severs east-west connectivity. So in my opinion, with regard to condition number three for the CUP, it just can't be met by the, the configuration of this development. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Mr. Chair, if I could just apologize, I'd like to circle back for one minute if I could on the sidewalk issue. You know, it's, it's difficult on the Zoom meetings. We don't have the benefit of interacting and whispering to clients and team members, but if I may, just, just jump back to the, the screen, if I may, on sidewalks.
Yes, please do.
Mr. Monahan sent me a text saying, hey, Jim, can we, can we get a connection from this driveway to this driveway? It would be off pavement. Okay? And so I, I think there's room there, but I think we could include in the plan some form of a sidewalk connection between the, between the two, between the two driveways. So Mr. Monahan has given me the okay to say that to you folks here in response to the comments about sidewalk.
Thank you.
Yep.
Dave, anybody in the public wish to speak?
There are zero attendees, so I would imagine not.
No, they're pretty quiet tonight, then. All right.
Yeah. There are folks still with their hand up. Jay Leonard, who has, who's headed up all meeting, but maybe, John Gruder and Gwen English.
All right, well, let's, we're going to listen to Jay. Turn your microphone on, please, Jay.
Yes, thank you. Part of my problem is I don't know how to lower my hand, Mr. Chair. So I think it's lower now and, and I, I think we're fine unless, unless the board has questions about the sidewalk, I'm, we're fine with where we are now. I think you have all kinds of information now.
Thank you. Now, who's next, Dave?
I see one hand up now, Gwen English.
I do, Gwen. You're tired of me tonight. I just need a clarification on the main entrance road and how the configuration of, it's where the snow storage is, and it sort of bumps out into the road. It just isn't... I guess it's just the road is tapered there. I've been struggling with this ever since the first plan set. So, to the right of your hand.
Okay.
So...
Could you repeat your question?
I guess it's just that, I mean, I'm willing to be, I'm willing to be flexible with how roads are designed. Just the way, right above where your hand is, where the snow storage, is that, it's just that it's... The road is narrow there, and then it goes into the wider wider configuration to accommodate the turn lanes?
Correct.
It just looks like the snow storage is going into the lane of traffic. I guess it's just...
No, we have...
I don't, I'm not...
This is a true, this is a cross, a four-way intersection, stop control on these two sides.
Okay.
As you're traveling out of the site, now the road widens, it tapers to allow the two lanes for the left turn or the right turn. We do have, I call this a dog bone or a canoe. We have this island here, and...
It's that, that just, every time I look at it, and I'm fine with it, but I just wanted to make sure that I'm seeing that and I'm understanding that it is like a little canoe.
It's a landscape area. It's about a 15-foot area from the back of the sidewalk to the curb line.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, can we, I have other questions. I don't know if other board members have other questions or comments, but I do have other questions and comments, but I'm happy to get in line if other people on other subjects have questions or concerns.
Yeah. What I'm trying to do is to try to get the questions out and to have discussion, then close the public session so the board can deliberate. So, that's the direction I'm trying to move us in. So, bring up your questions.
Okay. And Jen, I'm not going to, I don't want to put you on the spot, so understand that I'm not going to throw you into this unknowingly, but back in that exact area we were just talking about, there are four or five, and I think there are aristocrat pear trees planted in that, and it's also a snow storage area. I'm a little concerned, and I don't, I'm not a landscape architect, I'm not a tree expert, but I just, I'm concerned about how those are going to hold up in that area with snow plowing and, with snow plowing. And I think there are four trees in that canoe and one that's sort of on the fringe. And you can't see them. Unfortunately, they're on the landscape plan. They're not, of course, they're not on that plan that you're showing. But I just always worry about new plantings and snow storage, whether that's compatible. And I love that there are trees there. I just want to make sure that they are going to survive.
Were you asking me or Gwen, or Jen, I'm sorry?
Well, I don't want to abuse, I don't want to take advantage of Jen's expertise, but I...
I'm happy to add my two cents, Gwen, on that. So, I think, what was that?
What sheet is the landscape plan on?
Twenty-three, sir.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. Thank you.
And I was just looking at the plant schedules to see how large those pear trees are specified to go in. I mean, usually, if you're going to be pushing snow against a tree, you know, you want it to be like three and a half, four-inch caliper, and well-staked the first year to have it not basically snap, have the truck not snap over. So, these are specified as two and a half to three inches. I would maybe recommend bumping that up to three and a half for those, for any trees that are in a snow storage area specifically.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. And I hope you don't mind that I ask that. I just...
No, good question.
No, thank you for pointing it out. I didn't really overlay the, I hadn't looked at it as closely as you had, I guess.
And while we're talking about snow storage, there's no snow, there's no, well, that's a good one to say. There is no snow storage between buildings B and C in that large... I was going to go back. So, on the eastern side, oh, actually, that's the western. No. On the side next to the wetland, that whole parking lot, you don't have any snow storage listed there, and I'm worried about that because you're... The way I would look at this is that now the snow is going to be pushed into that wetland, which concerns me. And I guess that's for the, I guess that's for you, Jim. I don't...
Gwen, I think you're asking about the area, the previous six parking spaces that we've removed.
Yeah, that, I mean, that big lot, that whole lot, even down, down...
Then through it here?
Down on, keep going down. Yeah, that whole lot doesn't have any designated snow storage area, and I'm worried about that getting pushed. I mean, there's going to be a lot of snow, and I'm worried about that getting pushed into the wetland area, and maybe that's what you had planned.
No, no, no.
But I don't know where else it's going to go.
Yeah. So, if I'm truthful, I've never operated a snowplow during a winter storm. I'm sure there's a science and a professionalism to it. You know, we've identified certain areas, but to be frank, especially in this particular area where we're neat to the wetlands and we've got some larger paved areas, I think smaller storms, Gwen, would typically just be cast off, much like the driveway at one's house, but I think the larger storms, I think snow will need to be stockpiled and then hauled off and disposed of in a legal manner. You're correct. There's not a lot of room in this particular part of the site, and so they'll have to, they'll have to remove it in a legal fashion.
Okay, and if it's stockpiled, I don't know where that would be either.
Typically, during a storm event, they would stockpile temporarily in, let's say, a row of parking spaces, and then same day, they would front-load it into a dump truck and haul it off. They wouldn't leave it there for an extended period of time. You often see large shopping centers and malls do that, and they leave the snow pile there all winter. That's not going to work here, you know. That snow's going to have to get removed.
It's expensive doing that. I... It's a costly, well...
In fact, Gwen, if I may, Mr. Chairman, we have note 20 on the plan that says snow removal to be placed in open areas of the site as shown on Sheets 9 and 10 of 30. If needed, excess snow shall be trucked from the site and disposed of in a legal manner.
Okay. Somewhere, I had a note, and I got this from, oh, wait a minute, hold on two seconds. There was a note from, I think it came from the Conservation Commission with concerns, again, right where your hand is right now, that section of the parking area down along, as it parallels the, well, it goes through the wetland, but I think you just have seed, I think you have a seed mix being proposed for that area, and it sounds to me like the Conservation Commission would like to have that planted with more substantial plants, just to encourage the wildlife and make that a little bit more of a buffer, create more of a buffer there, and I don't know if, and that was in one of the Conservation Commission notes, and I don't know if that's something that you would consider doing.
Yeah, if I may, Gwen, on the perimeter, pretty much the perimeter of the project is a conservation mix. It's a meadow mix. It's intended to be seeded and stabilized and then let itself, you know, grow naturally. And it is not a mown lawn. It is not a manicured lawn. And we've identified that in our plans. And I noticed that it's supplemented with some rootings. We see that as being naturalized over time, that buffer area between, let's say, the parking and the new edge of the wetland, all along the perimeter, as well as the stormwater areas themselves.
Well, I certainly didn't think it was, I didn't think it was something that would be mowed or manicured. I just, I guess I was hoping that there would be consideration of putting in like service berries, anything with berries, flowering plants that would encourage the existence of other types of wildlife, whether they're bees, butterflies, birds, that would take advantage of that for food.
So, if I may, I'm just reading the notes on Sheet 25 of 30 in the legend that the wetlands themselves have a mixture of speckled alder, chunkberry, dogwood, winterberry, pussywillow, spice bush, all of which currently exist out there, I think, today. So, we've tried to enhance certainly the wetland areas. I'm not exactly sure to the extent of some of the sloping areas, but again, the intent was a naturalized look. Yep.
I didn't look at the grading plan closely, but what's being done other than, I'll actually... What's being done to protect that as you're grading and preparing the site? What's being done to protect those areas, the wetland areas?
There's significant erosion control measures in the plan set, Sheets 14 and 15. It's a, in fact, it's a, I think, if I'm not mistaken, Kristin had asked for a double line or double row of treatment practices where we're working adjacent to a wetland area to remain. And that's, the stabilization matting also included. So, it's a very detailed program of protection on the outer edges, on the perimeter of the site development during construction. And again, Gwen, that's all part and parcel with not only the staff's peer review, but also the New Hampshire DES alteration of terrain permit process.
Okay. Yeah, it looks, I see a silt fence and a berm. Alright. It also, Conservation Commission had also talked about trying to reduce as much as possible spill-over lighting. You don't go quite to zero off of the parking lot. Is that, is that the best that can be done, especially with a pond? Actually, again, both sides of Buildings A and B, the pond and then the wetland by the parking lot. I just would encourage you to do whatever you can to eliminate any lighting spilling over into those as possible.
Okay.
Is there a dumpster for Building C?
So, there's a dumpster located here where my cursor is for Building A and B.
Yeah.
There is a dumpster here for Building C.
So, that is...
It's actually a double dumpster here that could be used by the commercial building and surplus if one's needed. Yep.
Okay. Alright. Curbing. We'll get into curbing later, I guess. I'm going to stop for the moment. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm done for the moment.
Okay.
Jen Martell's hands up. I don't know if it's leftover or new.
Jen, you wish? No, I just had one comment about those trees that Gwen brought to my attention. The aristocrat pears are also known as calorie pears. I think I had made a comment, I'd sort of done a review of the landscape plan earlier, and then made the comment that, so the calorie pears tend to be pretty invasive. There are parts of this country where they've like really taken over. You know, it's a lovely tree, but it's invasive, and it's also kind of weak-wooded, so after about 20 years, they start to drop branches like crazy. So, I definitely would not recommend that as a plant species. I'd recommend that the, I think there's only five on the plan, so it'd be great to substitute those with another, with a native tree. And so that was just the comment that I wanted to make on the planting plan. And then, Gwen, I, you mentioned curbing. I haven't brought this up yet because I know it's part of the waivers, but I just wanted to quickly make my comment about the curbing, because it'd be nice to hear from anyone else, any public or alternates that might want to talk about this before we get into waivers. But my, I'm not a big fan of the Cape Cod curve, Cape Cod curb personally. I know there's a ton of curbing on the site, and it's extremely expensive to put an all-granite curb, but specifically along the northern edge where the parking lot faces the wetlands, and there are stormwater inlets directly adjacent to the curb. I think in those locations, I would really rather see the more durable granite curbing put in those, basically along the two northern parking lot edges.
Is that here, Jen?
Um, no, keep going. I'm sorry, maybe my, I'm sorry, my north, south, east, west is mixed up, so it would be the western parking lot edges. Yeah.
Over in here?
Nope, so, yeah, so that one, and then go down on the drawing. Yeah, that whole edge. So, you have, so basically, my concern with the asphalt curb is that they are damaged pretty easily, and, you know, it wouldn't take much on like a really hot, you know, 95-degree day, somebody drives a little bit too far, hits the curb, and it sinks, and then next thing you know, you've got parking lot runoff going directly into the wetlands, because those are kind of low points of the site. So, I personally would really like to see granite curbing in those locations.
Is concrete curbing used at all in New England?
Mr. Chair, our waiver, we have three curb types on the property. Where we have sidewalk, we use concrete curb. It's actually integral to the sidewalk, so it's it's a monolithic port, so that the sidewalk and the curbs kind of work together and float together, and there's no differential settlement. We also have slow granite curb. Per your regulations... regulations, for the heavily traffic areas, and the, you know, the turning movements, curved landscaped islands, where we're proposing in our waiver letter, you will see, is really on the perimeter of the site, and it's really being done, being a workforce housing project to try to control costs, and it's really along the perimeters of the site, Cape Cod berm is generally considered not as attractive as granite, is it less durable, probably, but I do not think it's a, a very, I do not think it's a product that's readily disturbed, the top course of the pavement toes it in, we see bituminous curb in some instances, lasts over 20 years, and so, you know, we've asked for the waiver, sir, just as a cost-cutting measure for the project.
And just to be clear, I'm not suggesting that the entire, that 100% of the Cape Cod curb be removed from the project, I think just particularly in those two locations, I think it's important, because, sure, it might last for 20 years, but then you're, you know, you've got runoff going into the wetlands in 20 years, whereas granite curb will last for.
Presumably, they would fix it at that time, Jen, while I have the little larger blow-up here, can you tell me again exactly, with my cursor, am I close to the area?
Uh, sure, so, so, not along the curve, so basically, the two straight sections, yep, that one, and then that one, exactly.
Okay.
Along the guardrail, you know, you've got quite a bit of, you've got a slope directly after that, and, and then a wetland.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Dave, is there anybody else wishing to speak?
Yeah, well, Gwen and Jen, Jen just finished, so, Gwen?
Yeah, I agree with Jen, I'll just say that before I go on to the next, that was something that I was concerned about, too, and those two spots would make perfect sense to me, and from what I've read, it seems that the granite curbing will last a good 20 years or more, so I think, I think I would be much more comfortable with that, it's a sensitive area, and whatever we can do to protect it, I think we should, this is something that, again, going back to early Conservation Commission notes, and I'm just wondering if there's been any, I know this isn't really in the, in the project area, it's kind of outside the scope of that, but there was, there was talk about the fencing that had prohibited some of the larger wildlife from going under the underpass, and I just wondered if there has been, if there are any updates to that, I don't know if you've had any conversations with, with the state about those, about those areas.
This is Jim Petropolis, no, I'm, I'm not aware, I do recall it being an issue very early on, but I don't think it's in any of their conditions of approval that we received from the Conservation Commission, it's off the site, I think it's actually under the highway, I think you would bring in the DOT, is, because it's the DOT's fence, so I'm not sure it's really within our control.
Okay, no, I don't think it was a condition, I think they just thought it would, especially with Pete Stekler's comments about trying to maintain some wildlife corridors, I just thought it would be nice if we could pursue that a little bit, but I certainly wouldn't make that a condition, I just wondered if there had been any, any recent conversations with DOT or anyone else about that, and what the outcome of those conversations, excuse me, conversations were, but thank you, Jim.
Are there questions, Pete, Cameron, no? Well, has the board pretty much decided, feel they've had your questions answered, have Well, if not, then I think perhaps what we should do is close, close the public session of this part of the meeting, so the board can deliberate and make some decisions. So, public session is closed.
So, Mr. Chairman, as you usually do, you start with the waivers, and I'm sorry, I misspoke earlier, there's the six waivers in the memo, but then also the three additional waivers in the August 11th, 2020, letter.
Yeah.
That you received in your packet. So, however you want to proceed, but usually do waivers and then go on.
All right, why don't we start with waiver requests dated August 12th, 2020? What I think maybe we should do is ask Jim to lead us through these and review them with us, so we can take one at a time.
Well, you'd have to open up the public hearing again.
We can do it for, for him to present the waivers, you're saying?
Well, if you want him to, I mean, he's touched, I think he's touched on all of them in the past, he has a written, written waiver request that he's updated several times, the latest revision August 11th, to the extent the board feels that they want to hear more from the applicant on these waivers, you're free to do so, but I would suggest, because you had closed the public hearing, you would reopen the public portion and allow the applicant to speak on that.
Okay, we can do that, open the public session, so we can discuss the waivers and ask, we might start with waiver request number one.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, thank you again, Jim Petropolis, David's right, I think we have touched upon these, so I'm not going to read the letter, I will paraphrase, I'll cite the section, what we're asking and why we're asking it, and then I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair, one at a time.
Yes.
Waiver number one, Site Plan Regulation 7.5.4 requires a high-intensity soil survey, we are seeking a waiver of that, because our soils mapping for the project is a site-specific soils map, our testimony in the past has been, this is more consistent with the New Hampshire DES alteration of terrain permit process, it's essentially a more detailed analysis versus the high-intensity soil survey, and we think that granting this waiver is not contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Any questions that the board has about that waiver request? And is it appropriate, Dave, to ask for a motion? This waiver?
I, sure, sounds appropriate.
Just looking, you must have something on your sheet there that I can't find right now.
I do, on my, on my, in my memo dated August 13th, 2020.
Mr. Chair, do you want to take a motion?
Yeah, sure.
After reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, I moved at the request of Gateway at Exeter, Planning Board, Case Number 19-15 and 19-16, for a waiver from Section 7.5.4 of the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations to provide high-intensity soil survey information on the proposed site plan be approved.
Second. Move and second it. Any discussion? Then I'll call for a vote, we're gonna start with Aaron, please.
Yes.
Gwen?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
John? Cruder?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you. Pete Cameron?
Yes.
Molly Cowan?
Yes.
Ah, Jen, I didn't ask you, did I?
You did.
Okay, I say yes also, so that waiver is approved unanimously, all right, let's go to number two, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, number two, Site Plan Section, Regulation Section 9.7.5.5 requires a landscape islands to be provided in parking lots for every 10 to 15 spaces to avoid long rows of parked cars, we're seeking a waiver of that requirement to allow several of our aisles to be in excess of 10 to 15 spaces, as you've seen on the site plan, we've added islands in selected locations as this project has progressed, essentially, Mr. Chairman, we have, our request is along the outer perimeter of the parking, in the areas that Jen was talking about earlier, where for snow maintenance reasons, we prefer not to have a raised landscape island, meeting the strict compliance with your code would be a loss of 13 parking spaces on the project, I want to remind the board that the project enjoys significant buffers, we have over 60% open space within the 15 acres of development, and that we believe it is not invarient to the zoning ordinance of the master plan, and we seek your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Okay, Pete?
After reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, I moved at the request of Gateway at Exeter, PB Case Number 19-15 and 19-16, for a waiver from Section 9.7.5.5 of the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations regarding landscaping islands, landscape islands be provided in parking lot, in parking lots between every 10 to 15 spaces to avoid long rows of parked cars be approved.
Is there a second? Thank you, Aaron, move and second it. Any discussion? No, I'm gonna call for roll call vote, please, gonna start with Molly, please.
Yes.
Pete Cameron?
Yes.
Jen Martell?
Yes.
John Cruder? Gwen English?
I like my parking, my trees, I'm gonna say no on this one.
Okay, Aaron Brown?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion carries. Number three?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, number three, the Site Plan Regulation 9.9.2, and it's actually, in some regards, similar to the conditional use permit request within the wetlands conservation overlay district, it really seeks relief from some of the extended wetland setbacks, 75 foot from parking, for parking, and 100 feet from rural pools that are over 200 square feet in size, the request is to allow portions of the building parking and driveway access be constructed within these buffers, as can be seen throughout the site plans, and has been discussed at length, really, with this case, we're proposing, you know, the protection of the back land in lieu of developing the front land, and, you know, this property, if you look at the drawings, is riddled with pockets of varying types of wetlands, we've tried to identify the higher functioning wetlands in the back for the sake of developing the front, and I think that there's a lot of text in this particular request that speaks for itself, in fact, there's actually seven points that are addressed, and I'm gonna let the written, the written documents speak for itself, we believe when it's all said and done, and you take a real global look at this development, that granting this waiver is justified, the benefits derived from the back land outweigh the benefits of impacting these buffers, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Guess I can make that. After reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, I moved at the request of Gateway at Exeter, Planning Board, Case 19-15 and 19-16, for a waiver from Section 9.9.2 of the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations regarding the installation of reinforced turf be approved.
Is there a second?
I will second for discussion.
Hey, Jen?
I, this is, this is, to me, kind of an obscene amount of wetland encroachment that I think that it's hard to give approval on, I think that the applicant's conservation of the 45 acres is, it helps a lot, and I think that the very thorough analysis and discussion that we've had on the functions and values of these wetlands, you know, hours and hours of discussion, I think has been really critical to understanding what's going on here, and I feel like, you know, this is a really prime development area, it is the gateway to Exeter, and it probably will be developed, so I don't see any avoiding, I feel like if we don't approve this, we're just gonna be in the same position at some other time, so, you know, I'm personally leading toward, toward approving this with, you know, somehow, quite a bit of hesitation, but I feel like it's probably necessary.
I think that's well put, Jen, I, I'm, as I've said before, I'm not comfortable with this, because of, as Peter's pointed out, because of the amount of wetland and wetland buffers that are impacted by this project, having walked on the land and seeing that there are areas, as we see on the plan set, there are areas that are above the wetlands and could be built on, but I don't know that there is a developer who would be willing to limit the amount of building, I don't know that, I don't know if that's economically viable to expect, I don't know if it's, I don't, I'm sorry, I'm mumbling now, I don't know that a developer would come in and just build on the uplands and do everything possible to avoid the wetlands, I think the fact that Mr. Monahan has put aside as much acreage as he has is commendable, and as you said, Jen, if, if... And as you said, Jen, if someone else were to come in, I'm not sure that we would see that happen. But it doesn't take away the sting of saying yes to the amount of wetlands and buffers that are being impacted by this. It doesn't feel, it doesn't feel very good. So it's not easy to raise my hand and say, yes, I, I am in favor of granting the waiver. And it sets, to a certain extent, it sets a precedent, saying that we're willing to, willing to go with this. Another developer on another property might look at this and say, well, you were willing to grant waivers for that project. Of course, we can always say yes, but look at the land we protected in the back. So I'm, it's, this is not easy.
It's an extremely challenging site. There's no question about that.
And we've known that for a long time.
Yeah. And Mr. King had it for many years, but nothing could happen, I'm sure, because of the same things. Any other comments? Molly, did you have some, or you just want to hear the discussion?
I mean, I am struggling with the same issue that Jen and Gwen bring up. I also am very mindful of the master plan that sort of clearly delineates where there is developable land and this is in that corridor. So while I think, you know, while I'm really struggling with the connectivity of the wetlands and breaking that up to the extent that we are with this project, I also think, I really am considering what Jen said about, you know, at some point, this is going to be developed. I like this project because I like the things that it addresses, in particular, the inclusion of workforce housing, which I think is sorely missed. And it's something that I worry about a lack of, especially in, you know, I mean, we are not post-COVID by any stretch of the imagination, but what that recovery looks like. And I think that we have a thoughtful developer here who is also, you know, working with us and thinking through this and do, and providing something that the town needs. So I am weighing these things as well and, you know, thinking it over in my head while also, you know, being considerate of the fact that we have set aside, you know, this is in the Tiff district, this is part of the land that we said we should develop. Like this, if you're going to develop, this is where you should do it. And this is, this is that, this land. So I guess, I guess those are my thoughts.
Okay. Sounds like we're all about on the same page. Anybody ready to second it for action? Unless there's more discussion we need to have?
There's already a second.
I believe Molly seconded it for.
Yeah.
We already have a second.
For voting.
Okay, fine. If there's no more discussion, then I'll call the vote. Let's start with you, Jen.
Hi.
And Gwen? And come back to you if you'd like.
That'd be great.
Okay. Aaron?
No.
Molly?
Yes.
Oh, let's see. Pete Cameron?
Yes.
Gwen?
I'm going to say no.
Okay. I'm going to say yes. So that's, everybody has voted, correct? Yes, John, did I ask you?
I don't think so.
You didn't ask John?
Didn't ask John?
Yes.
Now the yes. Well, I believe that we have.
Five, two.
Okay.
Passes.
Okay, five, two. Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you for your good discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will, with the board's pleasure, I'll move to waiver request number four in my letter.
Yes.
Section 9.12.1, which requires a total of five loading spaces for the commercial building, we're seeking a waiver of that. We believe the ordinance is really written with the word "commercial" in mind as a traditional loading dock door. This building would require five dock doors. You've heard Mr. Monahan's vision for this building of a daycare center, of small retail offices, no restaurant. So we have provided, you know, a space in the front for delivery of, you know, the FedEx type UPS, Amazon type trucks at the commercial building, but we have not provided a defined traditional loading dock door for this building. The reasons for the waiver are cited in our letter. Again, the type of use anticipated for the buildings did not typically require a need for a large loading dock area. And that we're providing, you know, meeting kind of today's way people live with the smaller vehicles, we're providing a delivery van space in the front. And that our request does not vary the provisions of the Exeter zoning ordinance or master plan. So we seek your, we seek your approval of this waiver.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
After reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, I move at the request of Gateway at Exeter Planning Board case number 19-15 and 19-16 for a waiver from section 9-12-1 of the site plan review and subdivision regulations to provide loading dock spaces be approved.
Second, please.
I'll second.
Thank you. Jennifer? Discussion? Roll call vote. Aaron, let's start with you, please.
Yes.
Gwen?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Pete Cameron?
Yes.
Molly Cohen?
Yes.
John Gruder?
Yes.
And I say yes. That one passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll move on to waiver requests.
Let me, let me stop you there, Jim. This, this one's not needed, the parking space waiver. The planning board, you know, you can't, A, if you're asking for a waiver from a zoning ordinance, it's not a waiver, it's a variance. But section 5.6.5 of the zoning ordinance specifically allows the planning board may grant reductions in the number of size of required off-street parking spaces in conjunction with its site plan review. It goes on further, but we've routinely, the planning board has routinely allowed less parking that's required, is actually encouraged it. The ordinance does not require it to meet the zoning ordinance in this case in conjunction with site plan review. So I would say you do not need a waiver. 13.7 is not triggered. And you, by approving the site plan after pretty exhaustive discussion on the parking and the parking spaces, whereas the planning board actually asked for six spaces to be removed at the last meeting, I think you have the authority under it and it's going to be covered under the site plan approval process and you do not need a waiver.
Well, thank you. With that, Mr. Chair, I withdraw waiver request number five. How's that?
That's good. Let's go on to number six.
Waiver request number six, sir, is the curving waiver. Section 9.7.5.6, which requires private sites to use granite curving for all traffic control and planting islands. We're asking relief for the use of Cape Cod berm in select areas of the site. In fact, Mr. Chairman, I submitted with my waiver a graphic that we presented at one meeting. We have over 7,200 feet of curving on this project. We were seeking about 23% relief for that. Given the testimony early this evening about the two areas on the west side of the site that have been informally asked of us to use slope granite curb, and we would commit to doing that this evening, Mr. Chair, it further reduces our request. But given the testimony this evening by a couple of the planning board members, we would agree to add slope granite curb on the west side of the lot. But there are still several areas, presumably along the south side, that would require your relief. We believe that it's not contrary, and we believe it does not, you know, harm the public health, safety and welfare of the citizens of Exeter, and it's not contrary to your master plan. So given the last minute change that I just threw at you, we are seeking relief of a couple of select areas, but we would accommodate Ms. Martel and Ms. English's comments earlier this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion? You make a motion, Pete? Are you just waving at the flies?
I was waving at the fly. It was the big one.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion if Mr. Cameron doesn't wish to.
Aaron has his hand up.
Oh, oh, Aaron.
Hi, Aaron.
Hi, I didn't want to make the motion, but I wanted to get more clarification on the amendment to the motion. I think we need to be fairly specific on that. I'm not sure if Jen Martel can help with that.
I was thinking that it would probably be a condition of approval rather than, I don't know if it'd make, I don't know, I guess it's a Dave Sharple's question. Do you?
No, I would definitely make it a condition of the waiver. I would.
Condition of the waiver, okay.
Correct. Then you would approve the waiver with the condition that granite curbing be installed along, what is that? Is that the south side, Jim?
Westerly, David.
Oh. The westerly edge of pavement along the guardrail, where the guardrail is.
Right.
So that, that would include, show that, that straight line?
And this one, as I understand it.
Yes.
Is that correct, Jen?
Yes, and you had mentioned slope granite curb, and I was wondering if you have any aversion to vertical granite curb in that location. I just feel like it would hold the edge a little bit better, but.
Yeah, we'd prefer slope granite. We've got slope granite everywhere else. I think it would be more consistent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does that need to be clarified anymore, Aaron, do you think?
I just, I think we've got to turn it into words. I'm not sure Mr. Petropolis can help us with that.
Yeah.
It's the westerly curving of letting building A, B and C. Something like that.
Yeah, I might add, Mr. Chair, along the roads where there's 16 spaces and where there's 30 spaces. And so at least it's tied to the plan. As shown on sheet, as shown on sheet nine of 30.
Okay. How's that, Aaron?
Yeah, that sounds better. It's just when we make the motion, we have to be able to add that or reference it so that it can be done properly. I'm going to feel most comfortable if Jen Martel makes this motion, if she's.
Ah, okay. Mr. Chair, I can, I'll make the motion. Unless there's any more, no more discussion?
No more discussion.
Actually, that's for after, okay. So after reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, I moved at the request of Gateway at Exeter Planning Board case number 19-16 for a waiver from section 9.7.5.6 of the site plan review and subdivision regulations requiring granite curving for all traffic control and planting islands be approved with the following conditions, that the curbs currently shown on sheets nine and 30, on the westerly end of the parking lot with 16 spaces and 30 spaces respectively, be sloped granite curb.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, let's see. Molly, let's start with you, please. What's your vote, please?
I vote yes.
Okay. And Pete Cameron?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Hi.
John Gruder, please.
Yes.
Gwen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
And I say yes. Very good. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Usually I write those, so I didn't write that. So I'm just a message to Daniel, taking the minutes. Please make sure when you draft the minutes, you look at what, you know, Jen Martel said and you put that in verbatim, because I will use that to put in my letter to the applicant. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm going to turn the remaining waivers over to Attorney Leonard. Thank you.
Okay, that makes, you have to change to another letterhead there, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, should I go through it in the same way that Jim did and just go one by one?
Yes, please.
Okay. So the, there are two letters that we submitted. One was in, was May 11, 2020, and one was August 11, 2020. Both support all waivers, but I'll go one by one. The first one is a waiver for guidelines of section 11.3.4 of the subdivision and site plan regulations. That is the requirement, and it's actually a guideline that for multifamily developments such as this, the guideline is 400 square feet of recreational space per dwelling unit. We've talked about this in the past. Essentially, it is, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense in this particular case because we are contributing the 40 acres in the rear. If, if we did not get a waiver of this particular request, then we would reduce the amount that's donated to the town. So it's a, it's kind of a catch 22, if you will. We have the land, but it doesn't make sense. It's more important to consolidate the land going to the town. So that's the reason for this particular request. It does, there are standards for the waivers in this, in the subdivision and site plan regulations, and this does meet the standards as we have shown in the two letters.
Okay.
And, and just, and just to clarify, I'm not sure I, I don't want to muddy the waters here too much, but I don't believe these are guidelines, as he says. It doesn't say that. It says the following additional requirements. It says, "will be guided by Article 7 Open Space Development and zoning ordinance. These regulations and the following additional requirements." I'm not sure I've ever gotten there as guidelines. We've always, they're additional requirements. So just to clarify that, I mean, I think the waivers, you know, waiver's a waiver, but I've never viewed these as guidelines.
Well, but there's a big, excuse me, there's a big difference between guidelines and requirements.
I understand that. That's why I wanted to point that out, that I've never, we've never applied these as guidelines. And if they were guidelines, maybe I'd question whether a waiver is even needed or not.
Well, in the letter of August 11, this is as a request to waive the impact fees assessed under the authority, blah, blah, blah. So.
No, we're not talking about, we're not talking about recreation impact fees at this point. We're talking about the requirement in section 11.3 of the site and subdivision regulations for multifamily development that requires 400 square feet of recreation space.
Yes.
You know, active and/or passive for each dwelling unit. So they're asking for that, and their justification is in the letter. They talk about the, the 47 acres of protection and so forth. So that's what we're talking about now. We're talking about the recreational space, dwelling unit. unit.
Excuse me, is that recreational space, Dave, adjacent to the project? I mean, where, where would, if this were to, if I had to add that 400 per, 400 square feet per unit, where would it go? Where would that recreational?
Uh, you know, that's, that's a question for the applicant, not, not for me.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I'll direct it to, uh, we got Thomas, are you the Buddha Point Man?
Yes. So I think our understanding is it would be required to be on site. So therefore we, we would have to essentially take it from the land being donated to the town for, for preservation and put it on site as a recreational area.
Okay, but my question is still where? Can I, you just move? I'm not, I'm not sure where you've got the space. It's not going to be in wetlands. I'm missing something, I'm sure.
Well, maybe I'm missing something. I, I think the requirement is that there be four, that there be 400 square feet on site for on-site recreation. The reason we could change the line so that there would be that much land for on-site recreation. It might be passive, as is the adjacent property to some extent, and, and that's, you know, the adjacent property being the land donated. And that's part of the reason for the waiver. So when we initially proposed developing the front and protecting the back, it was with this in mind, that the back space would be open and, and available for use by the homeowners if they chose. What happened was, as the Conservation Commission looked at it in some more detail, they didn't want to make it an active recreation area, but it is still a recreation area, and that's, that's kind of the reason that we're asking for the waiver. Essentially, we would have to change the lot lines between the two, lot 47-7 and lot 47-7-1.
Okay.
Pete, if you're done, Aaron has his hand up.
Yes, I'm done.
Aaron?
I, I think in this case, the amount of recreation required would be a little over two acres, because of the number of residential units. I do think that the applicant has taken their best effort with the amount of development on the parcel, part of the parcel they're developing to limit the impacts, given the scope and nature of the project they've got in front of us. I think pushing more human impact into that wetlands area would be contrary to the intent of our Conservation Commission. I do think there's going to be impact. Just having that amount of human beings living close to that area, some of them are going to spill into that area just by nature. But I, I'm in favor of granting this waiver because I think it makes common sense.
We, we've discussed this at some length before, and again, I think it makes sense. So how would it be worded, Dave?
Uh, I would say, after review, after reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, I moved at the request of Gateway at Exeter PB case number 19-16 for a waiver from section 11.3.1.4 of the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations regarding the requirement of 400 square feet of recreational space per unit be. I'm hearing approved.
Approved.
So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any discussion? Then I'll ask, John, you moved on the screen anyway. How about you voting first this time?
I'm gonna vote no.
Okay, Jen?
Yes.
Pete, Cameron?
I'm gonna vote yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Uh, Gwen English?
Yes.
Aaron Brown?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. The next waiver, Mr. Chairman, is the waiver that you referred to earlier. It's a, specifically a waiver of the impact fees assessed under Article 11 of the zoning ordinance, as they relate to recreational fees. And the waiver is requested in accordance with the standards that are set out in that, in the zoning ordinance. We've talked about this in the, over the last couple of meetings, but basically, Mr. Monahan has an obligation for some wetland mitigation. But he is donating a, a tract of land that has been appraised by a professional appraiser and has a value of $1,855,000, I think is the exact number. And he is also providing some mitigation there, and, and that is approximately, well, actually, let me say that the letter of August, I'm sorry, the letter of May 11 sets out these figures in a, in a specific detailed discussion. We, of course, incorporate that in, in our request. But the, the value of the property is $1,855,000. The mitigation obligation, when you, when you reduce that number by the mitigation obligation, it leaves a balance of $1,255,000 in value that Mr. Monahan is donating, and we're simply asking for credit for that. The, the regulations and the zoning ordinance specifically say that when you donate in kind, you can get credit. And so that's essentially what we're asking for, is credit for the excess value of the value of the donated land. And, and for informational purposes, essentially, that's $600,000 that Mr. Monahan is contributing in terms of mitigation value. So we've taken that out of the calculation, and, and that's why I can't, why I suggest the number of $1,255,000. It's above and beyond the mitigation requirement.
Any discussion? Someone ready to make a motion?
I think I have my hand up, don't I?
Oh, I don't know. I can't see.
He does.
Yeah, I just, how do we verify, not that I don't trust the applicant or his attorney, but do we just take their word for that appraised value? I have no idea.
I think we contribute, I think we submitted the appraisal. It was by craft appraisals.
Somewhere in the paperwork, we've seen it, yes. I have.
I remember seeing that. And we're, and we're good with that, David? That sounds about right?
I'm not an appraiser.
We did have a lot of.
I'm on record that I think it's high. I've said that before, John. I don't know.
Yeah, it seems.
It's been a while. You're old and unbeauty, so.
Who's brains?
You're not gonna let that one out.
It's, it's just the number does seem high to me, too.
Well, if I may, Mr. Chairman, the number doesn't actually have to be that high in order to justify. I think the actual recreation fee is 175. One minute, I think I probably wrote it down, yeah.
Must have counted.
It's $159,000. So all we really, in, in terms of a mathematical question, all we need is a value that's 159,000 more than the mitigation required commitment. And it, and we're saying that it's $1,250,000 more, but all we're doing is getting $159,000 credit.
Gwen, Gwen, go ahead and ask a question while I look at my notes.
The only other thing I would say, Mr. Chairman, is, and I know it's been said, I hope it's not too much to say, but this is in the context of workforce housing and affordable housing, and what we're trying to do is, is minimize the costs in order to make this project work. We're gonna have 25% that are affordable to, so, so for rental property, the, the calculation is difficult. It's affordable means that 30% of the, of the family income can be allocated for, for houses, you know, for rent and utilities, essentially. And for rental units, the median income is 60% of the median income of the region. So we're taking a smaller median income and applying the 30% to that, and we're required to have 25% of these units that are affordable to that, that family group. And it's a difficult, it's a difficult thing to make this financially viable, and that's, that's a big part of the reason for the request for this, this and the next waiver.
Aaron?
I'm not sure, Gwen, if I jumped you. I didn't mean to.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I, I understand the applicant's argument for this waiver, but I also look at the actual reason we have the impact fees. They really don't, this number of units coming in, there's going to be a much bigger impact to the school infrastructure. I, I think some people on this board were part of a big project down the street, on the same street being approved, and there's a lot of students that hit our schools coming from that project, a lot of special needs as well. $160,000 doesn't go very far. We start to talk about the services that will be required of our school system to handle this additional increase.
Right.
In student enrollment.
I thought we were talking about the recreation waiver at the moment.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear. This is not.
Waiver, yeah. We kind of crossed paths there, but.
You did, you little, you cross pollinated a little bit, but.
We did, yes. So, so what are we on now, recreation?
We're on the recreation waiver.
Argument, go ahead, Aaron. Yeah, it is the same argument, and we just waived the on-site requirement for space internal, and I think you're gonna have, I, I don't think you're gonna have, this is not an active adult community that we're approving. This is a partially workforce housing, partially market rentals, and you're talking 224 units. That's a significant impact on our infrastructure, and these numbers are just a drop in the bucket to, to accommodating the needs that are going to be required.
There is woefully little recreation space on site, which I guess is why I voted against that waiver. We don't want them in the, in the back acreage because it's, it's, you know, conservation land, basically. And you're gonna have a lot of kids, you'll be a lot of kids running around with no place to play. And then there'll be, then someone will be looking to the town to do something about it.
Gwen, did you have a comment?
Um, they've, they've pretty much said what I was, what I have been thinking, and I certainly appreciate the argument that the applicant has put forward. I, and I appreciate the amount of land that they are willing to give to the town for conservation land. The, where I struggle is that, that now the cost of providing recreation for these new residents is going to fall on the backs of the current residents, because we're gonna be maintaining parks, we're gonna be maintaining the pool, we're gonna be providing different activities for recreational opportunities for families and kids. And that $1,255,000 figure is great, but it doesn't, it doesn't pay the bill for what the services are, for the services that are going to be required and used by the residents. I'd be willing to entertain a percentage if we can do that. I mean, we're, we're gonna be looking at that for the school impact fees. Could we do that for the recreation fee? And maybe give them a break on it?
Yeah.
I don't know. This is, this is a tough one.
You've done, you know, percentage fee requests in the past.
Well, as we heard the other night, that they're upgrading many of the parks right now, too, with equipment that.
What is the calculation? Do you know that, Dave?
The calculation of?
This wa, waiver request, the dollars?
Yes, I, I know. For the number of, for the number of units, the, the recreation impact fee would be $159,264. It's $711 per unit.
Thank you, Attorney Leonard. So, in my opinion, given the impact of this project, what it's gonna bring in, in terms of the number of residents, if you're gonna grant a waiver request on this for these impacts, why do we even have them? Honestly, we've, we've imposed it when people are bringing six single-family homes into this town. You're talking about over 200 residential units.
Totally agree.
Should we put a motion forward and see where it goes?
Sure.
Go ahead, John.
I would just suggest for a motion, you just simply say the request of, of Gateway of.
To waive impact.
To waive the recreation impact fees be.
Be denied. Oh, do you, do you make negative motions, or do you make a?
No, you, yeah, you do.
You allow that? Okay.
Yeah.
My motion would be to deny.
But with that, I would also make the condition, because it, it's raised in the letter about the calculation of our current impact fees, and they're outdated. And I have, we, the town has contracted with a consultant who's updating our fees, and he's actually updated the rec fees already and sent them to us. They haven't been adopted or official yet, and he's working on the school impact fee. So I, I would say denied, but also allow the applicant to either pay the cost under the new fee, newly adopted fees, or the current fees, whichever is less, because that gives the opportunity, you know, it could be more, but they're vested under the regulations right now. So if it is, it is. It goes back to the less. But if it, if it comes out less, the new procedure, and they're, they're right now, they're, they're in front of us right now, I think the option should be given, you know, they should be allowed to pay the, the less, lesser of the two.
So it comes down to whichever is less?
Correct.
Yes.
That's, that's fine. I'll include that in the motion.
Second.
Well, actually, did, you said I could make a motion to deny. So how are you?
You did.
Which I did, but so that I don't, I don't need to add that word.
No, you allow, yeah, but allowing the applicant with the recognition, you're allowing the applicant to pay the, the, either the current recreation impact.
I'm not waiving him, but I am giving that choice.
Correct.
Okay.
That's my, that was my intent.
That's my motion.
Hey, you second? Aaron?
Yes, second.
Okay, any discussion on that?
So I just want to be clear. The motion is to deny the request to waive the rec.
So I just wanna be clear, the motion is to deny the request to waive the recreational impact fee. However, we will allow the applicant to utilize the new fee update that's coming in process if it is lower than the current one in place.
Correct.
Correct. So an affirmative vote, a yes vote for that denies it, but gives them the opportunity to pay the lower rate, basically.
Dave, I just wanna ask a question on that. If they didn't ask for that, they weren't asking for a waiver, how would we treat that situation?
I was going to, I would have incorporated into one of my conditions of approval, but they were already asking for a waiver, so I thought I would just mention it at that point. I would have addressed it.
Great, thank you.
Okay, you ready for the vote? All right, Aaron, let's start with you.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Gwen?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Pete Cameron?
Yes.
Molly Cohen?
Yes.
Can I say vote yes? So the motion passes? Here we go to the next one, please.
So the next motion is, or the next request is set out in the August 11, 2020 letter and it is specifically for school impact fees, requesting that this board waive 25% of the school impact fees because of the workforce housing percentage, basically. And it's a lot of the same arguments, you know, we're making a donation, but it's about the workforce housing component of this project. All of these fees may very well make this. It's our belief that it makes it economically not a viable project. And that's part of, that is the reason for this, that's the reason that the waiver makes sense. And I appreciate that, you know, I appreciate that this, that towns spend money on recreation and schools. What I think we have learned over the last 20 years is that the greatest cost to towns was not having affordable housing. It hurt the state of New Hampshire, it hurt the region on the seacoast and it continues to hurt the state and the region. And it's because there is not, there is not housing to support a workforce that supports the economy. So all of those things together justify waiver of 25% of the school impact fees. And I'll also say that in our analysis of the schools, there's not gonna have to be a new school, there's plenty of capacity. So that's another reason for the request.
Okay.
Just in terms of the numbers, I didn't say that, but I think I do have that. And let me see if I can. So the, the school impact fee is $1,344 per unit for a total of $301,056. So we're asking for 25% waiver of that figure.
Okay, can I talk on this for a sec?
Yep.
With everything going on with COVID, I have a wife who's an elementary school teacher in town and I've listened to far too many school board meetings in the last month and but some very interesting stuff came out of this. The average, average teacher in our SAU is compensated at $90,000 annually. When you consider the healthcare benefits.
All expenses, yeah.
Yeah, everything in. It's a little over 90, actually. We have a pretty high standard of education with our average teachers as well, so they're highly qualified people. But they get into this a lot because of replacement of teachers. If COVID hit and they had to start replacing or duplicating teachers because of spreading out school days, et cetera. This impact fee is a small drop in the bucket. It's, and if your project is hinging on $300,000 of this scope to be viable or not, I would challenge you that you should not even be in front of us. That's, that's a crazy argument, in my opinion.
Gwen has her hand up and so does John Gruder.
Gwen?
John, John, you go.
No, my hand was left, I was.
I was too. So, well, while I've, while I'm on, so Aaron, Aaron, you're not in favor of even the 25% for this. You would, you don't, you wouldn't approve, you wouldn't approve of a reduction in the impact fee.
I mean, Gwen, I don't think.
I understand what you're saying and I'm not arguing. I just wanna make sure I know where you're standing.
You are accurate.
Okay, thank you. It's 10 o'clock. I'm wilting.
It is, okay.
Thank you.
John?
I don't think I have my hand up anymore, but I feel the same about this as I did the recreation waiver. And that was before Aaron educated me about how much we're paying our teachers.
I can't take the credit of passing along information provided by Dr. Ryan, who did a great job with what he was talking about. But I wanna say that, you know, I empathize with what these folks are doing, but with workforce housing, they already get credits in unit numbers and they're going for type of financing that, for that as well. This is, these fees are nominal compared to the actual impact of this project on the taxpayers, frankly.
Yep. Did Aaron make a motion yet?
He took the words right out of my mouth.
I'll make the motion, Dave, if you read it. Can you do that?
Yeah, I moved at the request of Gateway at Exeter, HB case number 1915 and 1916 for a waiver from the school impact fees, from a waiver from 25%, you know, of the school impact fees, because that's what they're asking. 25% of the school impact fees be waived, be denied? That's what I'm hearing.
Almost.
Second.
John, second.
Also, the same, the same, you know, not in condition, would apply that they could go to the, you know, new fee, they could go the old fee or the new fee, depending whichever is less.
Sure. Yeah, so amended.
Yes, okay. Okay, let's start with Jen. Your vote, please. Yes, okay. Gwen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Pete?
No.
And I'll vote no. Motion passes. Now we're to the.
Yeah, to the lot line adjustment.
Lot line adjustment. Okay, that would be over here. Anybody like to make a motion regarding lot line adjustment?
Mr. Chair, I'll be happy to make that motion. I moved at the request of Gateway at Exeter, planning board case number 19-15 for a lot line adjustment and subdivision approval be approved.
Okay.
I'll second.
Move in second. All right, let's vote. Those in favor, let's see. Pete Cameron?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Gwen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay.
The next up would be the conditional use permit. I do have a recommended condition of approval from the Conservation Commission's memo. If the planning board so choose to do that, they recommended, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for any building and/or unit, a trail open to foot traffic only would be installed at the applicant's expense following review and approval by the Conservation Commission of the location, length, width, and surface materials.
Anybody like to make a motion?
You are so moved with Dave's recommendation.
Move to approve, I assume.
Move to approve, yes, sorry.
Okay.
Now, for reviewing the criteria of wetlands, conditional use permit, I moved at the request of Gateway at Exeter, planning board case number 19-16 for a conditional use permit be approved with the following condition, I think is what you said, John, isn't it?
Exactly.
Your second.
What exactly is the condition? David?
They're building.
The one I read, prior to the issuance of, I'll read it again, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for building and/or unit, a trail open to foot traffic only would be installed at the applicant's expense following review and approval by the Conservation Commission of the location, length, width, and surface materials. That's the condition. And just as quick further explanation, I believe the, correct me if I'm wrong, app, you know, Jay or Tom, when they talked, they talked about this with the commission about putting a trail, they agreed to it, but then they'd said they'd come back and figure it out at a later date. And that's hence the impetus behind this condition, for them to come back and discuss where the trail would be located, how long it would be, what it would consist of with and surface materials. Thank you.
So with that, Pete, will you second the motion?
Yes.
Thank you. And are we ready to vote then?
Can we discuss that for a sec?
Sure.
I, I really don't like approvals with that amount of vagueness still in terms of the materials, width, size. Another board approval for the applicant to deal with. Is there a way, Dave, that we could modify that to accomplish the goal? And, you know?
I, you know, that's a great question. I'm always like that too. But this is what the Conservation Commission put, you know, forward. The only way to refine it is determine the location, determine the length. You know, what is it made out of? But none of that decided.
I guess to me, they could be, and I'm not saying they would, but they could be completely unreasonable to the applicant in their requirements. And they could take a year to give it to them. I don't think it's fair to hold up his approval on a fairly serious sized project. And it's not that this is an important part of the project, but we should have some kind of restrictions on the approval if that's our condition of approval that passes, in my opinion.
Pete Cameron has his hand up?
Even though I seconded the motion, Aaron, I agree with you. I think this is, this is one of these things that they're gonna have five miles of trail wandering all over the place. And by the way, how are you gonna get to it?
I, yeah, that's definitely not, I mean, everything that I heard about the Conservation Commission's review and was privy to in conversations I had was minimize the impact of that area. They didn't want the trail through it. I think the thinking was just to put it along the northern boundary, where the existing road already is and just maybe tie down into Little River. That's what I heard. You know, I think we could do it one of ways. I mean, we, we could make if this condition cannot be resolved in one meeting of the Conservation Commission, the applicant can return to the planning board for reconsideration of this approval, I mean, of this condition, something like that. Like so, maybe to avoid the situation, which I don't think's gonna happen, but.
So I think in the past, a dollar figure has been put on this kind of a situation and then it becomes part of the Conservation Commission or the town planning department to determine what they're gonna do. I mean, one of the major, if not the major negative of this entire project is the wetlands impact. And as a planning board, we're releasing some of our authority and responsibility by just shooting this issue over to the Conservation Commission.
Yeah, excuse me, the more I think about it, the more I wanna, I'm gonna have to withdraw my second.
Okay.
I'm sorely troubled here with, with having, and Aaron, you just expressed it, having another entity, in essence, take the lead here. I'm, as I say, I'm troubled enough to withdraw my second of the motion.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I may be able to help if I'm allowed to speak.
Yes.
If I may jump to the, to the plan, I think it's our understanding that the commission, the Conservation Commission, I'm pointing to this particular location here, and we touched upon it at the last planning board meeting, where they were seeking access to the backland for the residents. And we, Mr. Chairman, identified this particular location as a high ground connection, which would enable the residents, just, you know, a small footpath down a small slope to be able to access that land. And so if the concern is how do the residents get to the backland, we've got that represented in the drawing. I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, I think that was part of it, Jim, and I agree with that. I thought I heard, do you have any recollection? I think I remember it was also there's a Little River network, trail network back there, and I thought it was to kinda, so it directed people where to go instead of just going, you know, creating a path where they wanted to.
The Little River is a long ways away.
I mean, not, not the Little, that, the Cokered Pond kind of headwaters up there.
I don't, I don't remember.
Yeah, there's a trail network there and, no, okay.
I think, if I may, this is Jay Leonard and I can't tell if you can see me or hear me or whatever, but I think the, they were talking about an existing trail.
That's right here, Jay.
And didn't wanna, they didn't wanna connect to Little River.
I, I remember Kristen was at the last meeting and she corrected me. I thought it was seeking access to this cart road over here, but she said, no, it's here because there was a trail in the upland in this location. And so we've got that represented on the drawing.
That's correct, yep.
Okay.
I might be able to provide a little clarity here since I had these discussions with the commission.
Ah, yes, there we go.
Hey, right.
It's, it's the, to my understanding is that what they are requesting is essentially the trailhead to the backland and that the trails or trail that would be developed past that would be done by, by them, by the Trail Commission. Mr. Monahan has agreed to a stewardship fee. I don't, I don't recall the exact amount, but it's substantial enough that, you know, with volunteers and members of the Trail Committee, they'd be able to design it and locate it. design it and, and locate a trail. So I really do think it was the, the trailhead, which is shown on the plan that they're asking about.
Where is it shown on the plan?
If, if Jim can get the plan back up.
The, the trailhead, like detail and everything, where it's gonna be?
No, no, we don't have a specific detail of width, type of materials, and length.
Is it even, is it called out on the? Oh, go ahead. What, what does the note say? It calls out on the plan?
No.
Yes, it says
There's nothing in the note.
On sheet six of thirty, it says possible access to backland for residents.
Just a little short, that little short section down to the toe of the slope.
And, and that was located in that area because there is uplands, short distance. Actually, when you, with the proposed grading directly down to uplands, that area.
May, maybe if you wanted to be definitive, you could say that, you know, this goes from, from the parking area. You know, you referenced the, the possible access to the backland to the, to the property line. So that would at least get you to where the town owned land would be. And then we could take over from there.
That would work.
Hard telling. I, I don't know what the intent was, but if that's, if Brennan says that was the intent to like just get, get the trailhead, well, then if they brought it to the property line of the forty-seven acre piece.
Do you, do you need to get clarification with Conservation before we vote?
That's gonna take, you know, that's not gonna be right now.
No, I know.
I think, I think that, that's something we could put in. Basically, they make the connection to the, to the town land, what becomes a town land.
Dave, can you read the proposed condition again?
As proposed in the memo?
Yes.
Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for any building and or unit, a trail open to foot traffic only would be installed at the applicant's expense following review and approval by the Conservation Commission of the location, length, width, and surface materials.
Okay, so what we're talking about is definitely a deviation from that request.
Unless they come up with, they, that's all they wanted was a trailer.
Yeah, but we don't
It doesn't sound like it to me.
Doesn't tell me that.
No, it doesn't sound like it.
Jand, are they saying to, to the town property?
I'm more comfortable with what Dave was talking about with due respect to the Conservation Commission. I think that the applicant is donating a substantial amount of land. The applicant is paying the applicable fees for recreation in this project, and if he brings a trailhead to the land that's then donated to the town, I think that's fairly appropriate. I think Jim could probably put that on a plan fairly easily as a condition of approval. You know, I, I, this is our responsibility as a planning board to approve plans and try to keep it detailed and tight so that enforcement is easy and not push our responsibility onto other boards. And unfortunately, there's nobody from the Conservation Commission attending this meeting. That's their choice. Unless someone on this board is on the Conservation Commission.
Not that at all.
So, I just wanted to, I'm looking at the memo that Dave was reading from and there is a little bit more information. I'm not on the Conservation Commission, but I can read their memo. So basically, it says that prior to people occupying the site, they don't want rogue trails kind of being created back there because it's sensitive area. So they feel that there needs to be like a place where that, this is my interpretation, that they need, there needs to be a place where the people will say, yes, this is how I access this space and this is where I can access it. They're also asking for a gate at the, at the property line. So it says, in addition to revising designs to add a gate at the junction of the development of the logging road, they recommend the planning board include the following condition, and then what Dave read. And the timing is important that it needs to occur prior to residents moving in to avoid the chance for rogue trails or dispersed use in sensitive areas.
It, it, it does make sense to direct them to one spot. I don't understand what the gate does. So force people to go around it.
Yes, yeah.
It prevents the motorized use because the, the upland is a logging trail, so you could conceivably drive an ATV on it or something.
But you don't wanna close gate to keep pedestrians out.
May I ask the date of that communication, Mr. Chairman?
Dave, do you know, or Jen?
I have it right here. It's June eighteenth, twenty twenty.
Yeah, I don't know that we've, we've seen that. Maybe we have. I don't know. I don't recall it.
Well.
There's a memo to the Conservation, or to the planning board from the Conservation Commission.
You know, I think our plan represents the responsibility for us to, for our residents to bring an access down connecting upland to upland. It's only another fifty feet to the town land. I don't think building a trail another fifty feet is problematic to us. I agree with Mr. Brown. We don't wanna be subordinate to another process. And, you know, frankly, we'd like to not have to go back to the Conservation Commission before action on this vote, obviously.
So I guess you could. There's a couple of different ways to do it. One way would be prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for any building and or unit, a trail open to foot traffic only from the parking area to the boundary line of map forty-seven lot seven dash one would be installed at the applicant's expense. And then you can leave it at that. That means that they will do it.
Yeah.
Well, you could, you could add, you know, the details shall be shown on the final plan, subject to review and approval of the town. You could do it that way. Or you could do the same thing and then add the Conservation Commission.
So perhaps Mr. Quigley can elaborate on what he would expect the trail material to be and the width of the trail, so we can be a little more specific, because I really try not to be vague in these situations.
So everything that I discussed with the Conservation Commission relative to trails was that they should be a minimal extent and impact. And that's why this, this location was selected as a, a potential area because it went right to uplands and right to what essentially was the main, you know, the main haul road for logging. So there was essentially already a trail there now. Would I expect that they could have a trail if they would actually just run a mower through it essentially? Again, I didn't under, I never took any of our conversations to mean that they were looking for the applicant to construct that. It was more for the access. I don't remember any comments about a gate. You know, I think that assumes that there's even a possibility that wheel motorized vehicles can, can access that area. I don't think that's the case with the grading and the guardrail. I think there'd probably be a, a small break in the guardrail for the, for the trailhead, and it would somehow navigate down a pretty steep side slope of development down to that area, so. I, I don't think it's gonna be something that someone could drive a car on. But the, the, the trail of minimal, minimal forest, forest trail that would, that, that would, not, not to make up, you know, put, put words in, in the Conservation Commission's mouth, but that, that's what I understood that they would likely want in that area.
Thank you. Pete Cameron, haven't you hacked some trails out by Riverwoods before?
There are trails there, yes. The Jolly, the Jolly Rand goes through, among others.
Yeah, what, I mean, that's just really just cut down the brush and potential trees and
Yes, we are, we have a committee which maintains part of it, but not all of it.
And what is it typically width?
Probably four feet. Maybe a little less. There is no, there's no, it's just raw trail. There's an occasional, occasional, I'll call it a little bridge over water, but not much more than that. And for the most part, you can see a, a part of the Riverwoods complex from most of the trail. It's through the trees.
So do we need to have some kind of erosion control on this little trailhead?
I would, there is not, there's none of that necessary, but because of the topography in the Riverwoods. It's mainly flat.
Okay, I'm most comfortable.
Is this something we could do by asking to work with Kristen on this? So we can, by doing that, identify that the developer will take care of that to the town line or to the town forest, whatever it becomes. And it works with Kristen in terms of widths, materials, location. Does that make any sense, or is that still too loose? I mean, a lot of times we have our town planner making the final detailed decisions, you know?
Well, but
We tried to be as specific as possible, but that one I said, when I said review of town staff and, you know, town staff review and approval, that's what I meant, like myself and Kristen could do.
Yeah, okay, that's good enough for me.
But, but I do appreciate, I do appreciate Aaron's thing because I like specifics too, because
Yeah, I mean, just to the town line, that, that gives it a length anyway, yeah.
Mr. Chair, what I think the, the one sticky point for me is the non-motorized, non-mechanized trail use, which includes bicycles. I think that, I think that somehow needs to be addressed. We don't, I don't think we necessarily want bikers all for biking, mountain biking, but in this area, I think that's a real concern to the Conservation Commission and whether it's a gate or signage, I just would like to have that narrowed down somehow.
Have some signage out there. Yeah.
I, I mean, yeah, you can, you can add signage. It is in the condition because it specifies open to foot traffic only. Exclude any other modes of transportation, in my opinion. Enforcement's another matter, but
No horses, no bicycles, no tricycles, yep.
But dogs. Right, Gwen?
Right.
Should we, should we give them a foot, a width? Four or five feet, something like that? We know that
That's, that's more than enough. If, if it's limited to foot traffic, you basically need two people in tandem, and that's all. You don't need much more than, more than three or four feet on most trails. And I, I, I'm still not totally clear as to exactly where they're, where these folks, if they're coming in by car, are gonna park. Now, is it, is it, is it at the bottom of Building A we're talking about? Is where this would all occur?
Correct.
So when they're gonna grab the first available space?
Yes.
But I, I don't
Unless they're numbered.
I don't think they're gonna be people coming from offsite to
I don't think a lot.
Do you? I think it's mostly people who live live in one of these buildings.
Mr. Monahan would like to speak if the board would be, let him hear him for a minute. Soon as he turns his microphone on.
Am I on?
You're on.
Wow, okay. Actually, I was talking to my wife who came in, so, but, but, you know, we, we, we hadn't seen this before. I, I don't believe until we heard about this. Correct me if I'm wrong, team, but you know, we are paying the fee to the, to the Conservation Commission. You know, I'm okay with bringing it to the property line. You know, you know, I know there was a discussion on motorized vehicles that they didn't want it. I know that I, I'm not quite sure how it, how it ended up with, with mountain bikes, but, but certainly, you know, one of the things, I mean, they're allowing hunting out back there. You know, so I'm not so sure I want trails out there if they're allowing hunting, but you know, but that's what the conservation wants, and so, you know, that's, that's what's gonna happen there. But with respect to us doing paths, this is a first that, that I, I recollect hearing it. I know there was a discussion of getting onto the site. There's, there's an agreed upon number that I'm gonna pay the Conservation Commission to do certain work on the property, so, you know, really, you know, I'm, I'm prepared to go to the property, to property line and, and, you know, other than that, I'll probably mess the whole thing up if I go out there and do something, so I'd I'd much rather leave it up to the Conservation Commission and let them do it as they see, see fit. Thank you.
Thank you. So what was that last word you had, Dave? I think, I think
Okay, yeah, I'll go. It is, it is ten thirty, so
Yes.
Meeting will adjourn no later than ten thirty unless the board votes to continue, so is everyone good with continuing here?
Make a motion to continue the meeting.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded, okay. Quick count. Pete?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Gwen?
Yep.
Aaron?
Yes.
John?
Yes, for this one.
Yes.
And I say yes. We're, we're getting closer here.
Okay, here's, here's the condition then, as, as I understand it, as I've been hearing it. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for any building and or unit, a trail maximum four feet in width open to foot traffic only from the parking area to the boundary line of map forty-seven lot seven dash one shall be installed at the applicant's expense and shown on the final plans, subject to review and approval of town staff.
You make that up?
Yeah, I like that.
That's fine.
Who's gonna move it? Who's going to move it?
So moved.
So moved, thank you Gwen, there's a second?
Second.
Thank you, moved in second. Let's vote on it, Aaron.
Isn't that part of a bigger CP?
That's a condition to the conditional use permit motion.
I think we should start over, honestly.
Okay.
It's not a lot of words.
Pete Steckler and Jen Martell have their hand up.
Oh.
Jen?
I didn't have any comments, sorry.
Pete? Steckler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I guess there's been a lot of attention paid to this tiny little trailhead. I just wanted to remind the board, and I hope this isn't insulting, that there are some significant conditions to make sure you're comfortable with, especially condition number three that states that there will be no detrimental impact to wetland functions and values as a result of this proposed project and that the board has fully reviewed the narrative, which really doesn't address that and is just a restatement of some of the functions and values, not even all of the primary functions and values. So I just wanted to make sure before a vote happened on the full conditional use permit that you were not just focused on, you know, 100 feet of trail, but three acres of wetland impact, eight acres of wetland and buffer impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Pete?
Jen Martell? Didn't you read the Conservation Commission language? Could you read that again for me, please?
Um. Like, I didn't really read the whole letter, I just kind of summarized.
Just, just the one part talking about the trail construction.
I, I think Dave's read that a few times, but.
Well, all right, but doesn't.
I can, I can read the last, I'll read, I'll reread what I read earlier. It says, we feel timing, we also felt timing of the trail construction was important and that it needed to occur prior to the residents moving in to avoid the chance for road trails or dispersed use in sensitive areas. To address these concerns, in addition to revising designs to add a gate at the junction of the development and the logging road, they recommend the planning board to include the following condition, and then it's the condition that Dave's read.
Okay, thank you. So it's our condition and not theirs.
That's correct. And, and the final design work will be done by Town of Exeter Planning and Staff, including the Wetlands Commission.
That's the condition. But did you want to go back up and, Aaron, to have somebody state the motion or do we want to have?
I think, I think we should restate the motion and the condition, if that's what it's going to be.
I don't believe anyone has made a motion, have they, to?
Yeah, they did, and Pete withdrew his second of it. I don't remember who made the, who did the motion.
On the conditional use permit?
Yes, sir.
I think, I think John made the motion because I read it.
All right.
Oh, I thought Aaron made it.
No, I did not.
What, what Davis provided was this, after reviewing the criteria for wetlands conditional use permit, I move that the request for the gateway at Exeter Planning Board Case Number 19-16 for conditional use permit be approved with the following condition or conditions. And we've been talking about the trail as being the.
So you want Dave to read the condition now, correct?
Yes.
Good. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for any building and/or unit, a trail maximum four feet in width, open to foot traffic only from the property, from the parking area to the boundary line of map 47 lot 7-1 shall be installed at the applicant's expense and shown on the final plan, subject to review and approval from town staff.
Through the property line makes it okay with me.
Yeah, that, that puts an end to it, I'm starting to stop, yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just to reiterate, we're, we're moving on the conditional use permit.
Yes, we are.
Want to make sure everybody realizes that it's not just this trail.
Right. Yes. We have a copy of that with the materials we got in the packet.
Correct.
And conditions, permit criteria. Yes, the pages outnumbered, but it's about the second or third page in.
Yep.
Cover one, two, third page in, yeah. And Pete Steckler has been referring to those criteria for us to be considering.
I, I do this motion further. A couple of, we passed a waiver regarding setbacks. And some of the comments that were made by members of the board actually bothered me, saying that if we don't approve this, we'll just be approving something else down the road. I think that's a really dangerous position to take when it comes to being a planning board member. And I think that there is land in this town that is not developable. So just because of applications in front of you doesn't mean you should assume that you'll have another one afterwards that you would end up having to approve for some reason. I understand, I think, what the sentiment is. But our job is to enforce the regulations as we see them and review the merit of the proposal in front of us on its own values and goods, bads and uglies. Not, not worrying about what could happen in the future. Another application, should we not give waivers or approvals?
It's a good point, Aaron, thank you for that. I understand what you're saying.
So did we get a motion? Is that a motion, Aaron?
I, I don't know if anybody did the motion. Lang read it.
I read it, and then Dave read the, the condition. But nobody has made the motion, to my knowledge. Would you like the applicant to go over the, the conditions?
Would you like us to, Mr. Chairman?
I think so, yes. Please.
Okay. So the conditional use permit is for the wetlands. Many of the issues and many of the standards are the same as the waiver that you granted earlier regarding the buffers. But essentially, it's Article 916A in the ordinance and the conditions are under 6B. And first is that the property is, it's a permitted use and it's permitted by zoning, by the zoning board of adjustment decision. The next requirement is that it cannot be feasibly carried out on a portion or portions of the lot which are outside of the district, outside of the wetland conservation district. We've talked at length about how there's higher functioning wetlands to the rear that the effort has been to make, to protect the more important wetlands on this site. But we kind of don't talk about the complement of that. And that is that there are uplands in the rear and there are uplands in the front. The, the owner of the property is certainly entitled to develop uplands. The zoning board, the wetland scientists, and that includes Brendan Quigley and GZA and Conservation Commission to some extent, the state and the Army Corps, all those that have reviewed this project have concluded that the impact to developing the entire site would, it would be a greater impact to the wetlands overall and not justified in that regard. It's better to move the development to the front of the site and minimize a reasonable development. Now, this is a reasonable development over 60 acres of land, and that's the issue here. What we're proposing is development on under 20 acres, but really it's a 60 acre tract. And, and it's important to, to say that because it sounds like it's fitting a lot into 20 acres, but there's a reason to do that. And, and the reasons are all of those reasons we discussed in the wetland discussion. I think the GZA and Tracy Tar, I believe was her name. She confirmed that Brendan's conclusions about functions were accurate and complete, as she confirmed his conclusions about all of those discussions that we've had. So, so that is the reason and that's the justification for the conditional use permit generally. Number three is, is what Mr. Steckler's talking about in the wildlife. There is no, she commented on that and she did not agree with his conclusion. There is connection to the north under the, under the highway. There's also important connection from the rear to the, to the balance of the publicly owned property. So there's a lot of good things that happen as a result of this that might not happen if you develop the whole site. In order to get to all of these upland areas to the rear, there has to be impacts to wetlands along the way and they're going to be piecemeal efforts and there will not be a contiguous 40 acre tract that's, that's added to the public space. The, Brendan talked at length in, in his report and GZA confirmed these functions, which, which functions were important. These particular wetlands have limited functions as compared to some prime type wetlands and every, and GZA confirmed that. His report showed it and the, 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 well, in terms of the functions, they are the, the wetlands to the easterly portion of these, of this property. While they're important, they are not as important as the larger ones to the rear. And this is a balancing effort. It's a question of what's a reasonable development on 60 acres with up, up uplands throughout the property. What's reasonable and what's the best way to accomplish that reasonable development? And that's what we are proposing here today. With regard to number four, it's a requirement that you minimize the detrimental impact to the extent reasonably possible. And I think there's been ample testimony that this developer has made every effort to reduce impacts that are possible to reduce, both in terms of his design and in terms of the location of the development. We've talked at length about that. The paperwork, you know, the written application supports that. In number five, in cases where the proposed use is temporary, it calls for restoration and there is, that's part of the plan. There is no temporary improvement that, you know, it is all restored, it is protected, the, all of the, there was extra protection to the wetlands that was put in, I think Jim Petropoulos mentioned. So it was actually doubled in some areas, the, the wetland, you know, the fencing and the AOT requirements. Number six is that, and, and number six is really what it's all about here. The obligations are to protect the health, safety and welfare of the public due to loss of wetlands. We have engineers, we have wetland scientists who have all said that there's no, there's no alteration to the, to the watershed, to the drainage, it will not have an adverse impact on floods, it will not have an adverse impact on water leaving the site or on the wetland waters. There's no harm to the public health, safety or welfare of people. And all effort has been to minimize the impact in all regards and there's, there's nothing to suggest that there's a safety issue going on here or that this would cause a safety issue. So I think the requirements are standard requirements that are typical in reviews of wetlands. I, I feel comfortable saying that you have a lot of information from more than two experts on wetlands. And the general consensus is that this was a well-designed plan and a reasonable concept to put the development in the front of the, or the easterly portion of the property in order to minimize impact and gain the most by a large tract of land added to the public land. And that supports the conditional use. And, and our, our application is in both writing and in the testimony presented and, and we'll stick with, we'll stay with that.
Thank you.
Mr. Steckler has his hand up.
Yes, Mr. Steckler. Peter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just, I just want to reiterate that GZA did confirm that a principal or primary function of the, the wetlands on site that will be impacted is for wildlife habitat. That, that's not stated in the applicant's conditional use permit application. And that that, the function of that wetland is critical to connectivity and the layout of this, this development severs wildlife connectivity. I understand what Tracy Tar said about Epping Road being a barrier for wildlife movement. But Epping Road is, you know, the, the traffic volume on Epping Road is definitely not a barrier to wildlife movement. If we took that approach, then there is absolutely no future for wildlife in New Hampshire. If we consider every road across the state as a barrier, a complete barrier for wildlife movement, genetic exchange, migration, et cetera. So, you know, it, it's, it's just not how wildlife connectivity is, is viewed across New Hampshire. That arterial road like Epping Road is a complete barrier to wildlife movement. So that wetland serves a function and it's because it's a wetland that that area is still undeveloped between the pond by the mobile station and the wetlands across the road on this site has left the only remaining viable area for east-west connectivity for wildlife in this area. So just wanted to reiterate that, thank you.
Thank you. More discussion or is a board member, board ready to make a motion?
There are no hands up.
No hands up.
No. It is pushing 11 o'clock.
Well, if the board is not prepared to make a decision tonight, then perhaps we're going to have to table a meeting to another time and date. But I'd rather, I think the board's sense is to, to wrap this up tonight, so.
Mr. Chairman, did, did the letters from the employers become a part of this, of the record of tonight's? I can't.
Yeah, they, they were already submitted previously. They're in the file.
They were, I believe I read them at our last.
Yeah, they were sent at a prior meeting to the planning board.
Yes, yeah.
Last meeting, at the last packet.
As a matter of fact, one was referred to earlier tonight, a different case. Yeah. So we know there's a lot of support out there from our business partners.
It appears that most of us aren't ready to make a decision. We have a meeting next Thursday, is it appropriate to try to get?
Yeah, that's where I was going to go with it, if, if you.
We have, maybe I'll make this, if it's, this is, this is the only thing we have to decide, correct?
Yeah.
Something we have to apply and approve the site plan.
What I would recommend, if you're not ready to make a.
We're not ready.
Because you have the conditional. You have a conditional use permit, and then you have the site plan.
Okay.
You would table it until next week, the 20th. Uh, no, 27th, I'm sorry. And I'd put it first on the agenda.
Yeah.
I would close the public hearing, ask any other questions you got. So only the folks voting next Thursday would, would participate in discussion. I wouldn't accept anything, any new information from anyone between now and then.
No.
Wanted to, if you'd just close the public hearing and then, and then close the public session of this, and then table it until the 27th at 7:00 PM. Put it first on the agenda, and then you would just simply deliberate the conditional use permit and the site plan application.
And we, are we starting next Thursday at 6:30 for something?
We are not.
We change that back?
Well, we never, no, we only did the six for the CIP. Uh, we, we didn't do.
Well, okay.
We never changed, I, I floated it, but it didn't, it went over.
I keep it down as we are doing 6:30, Dave. Did that not get passed?
Well, I think I, I floated it, but I thought it went over like a lead balloon, and I.
I think 6 o'clock went over like a lead balloon.
Right.
I thought it went for 6:30.
We did?
Yeah. All right, so 6:30.
Well. 6:30, because it was the CIP. We'd take care of the CIP, this would be the first before gate, uh, before the Grissette application. Because the Grissette application, you know, who knows how long that's going to take.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to table this and the conditional use permit vote and.
Close the public hearing.
And to close the public hearing.
Well, and the site plan as well, I mean, just table.
The site plan, that was it. Sorry.
Till August 27th at 6:30 PM.
6:30 PM.
Yep.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Oh, Gwen, you're still awake.
No, I'm here. I had to stand up for a while.
Move consecutive. So, uh, let's see, Gwen, how do you vote to that, then? Have you seconded it?
I'll vote aye.
John?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Aaron?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Pete Cameron?
Yes.
And I vote yes, and I also close the public session on this particular meeting. Thank you for your time, sorry we didn't quite.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. It's too late to do anything else. Can we put Castle off again for another week, Dave? Yes. Okay.
I, I'm, I'm thinking we're going to be running into this every time, but I guess we'll just, you know, it's too late to keep going at this point.
Yeah, absolutely. Aaron, you got a motion?
Motion would you hear?
Yes, thank you, second?
Second, yes.
Okay, those in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Say aye. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Elections this year will look very different.